Thank you Rafael, good evening Patterson, good evening members of the public. So at this moment, we about to start the meeting, so we waiting for one more council members to start having discussion formally about city business, but at this time, we have a presentation. Mr. Van Cherry is here with us, Mr. Van Cherry, I will open the mic for you to give us a great news that we have for all the council members and the community at large also as well.
Good evening, Council President, Council people.
Good evening.
Mr. President, I do have copies for every member of the council, and can you please...
No, mic is on, just Rafael could just give more value to the mic on the public side.
Alright, we good?
Very good, now it's good.
I also have one for the mayor, so that he can be part of this. The purpose of me being here is that Patterson, all of Patterson will be part of a dedication that will be held on April 27th in the New Jersey Vietnam War Veterans Memorial Wall in Homedale, New Jersey, honoring a fallen son of Patterson, New Jersey. Tony Van Cherry, Maitland Ave, Patterson. We're gonna talk about how it started and where we got to. In October of 1984, the Patterson City Council came to the Vietnam Veterans of Patterson and asked if they would like to have a home for the fallen sons of Patterson. Of course, we didn't say no, I was the commander at the time, so we researched with the help of families that were still here, friends, newspaper articles, with the help of Jack DiStefano from the museum, we gathered as much information as we could. We found thirty-one sons from Patterson were killed in Vietnam, the largest group in Passaic County. While we double-checked our paperwork, we found with the help of a fellow Vietnam veteran member of my group, Donald Sodel from the East Side section, who told me that this young man, Alan Katz, was from Patterson. But the reason his name was not on the jersey wall, or my, our monument here in Patterson, was that he was listed, you know, in Santa Monica, California, where his parents had moved out about a year and a half before he was killed, but the first eighteen and a half years were right here in Patterson. So, I will start out by saying that on May 7th, 1985, the Patterson Vietnam Veterans Memorial Monument was dedicated on a park on Wayne Avenue, I'm sorry, Union Avenue, between Manchester and Patterson Ave, becoming the Patterson Vietnam Veterans Memorial Park, honoring our thirty-two sons. Alan Katz was born in Passaic, but he was raised on East Thirty-second Street, graduating from school number twenty and East Side High School in 1965. Sometime after nineteenth graduation, his parents, along with their uncle, they owned a deli in Passaic on Monroe Street for over twenty years. It was called K&amp;S Katz and Sodel, which was Uncle Frank's last name. They decided to move to Santa Monica, California, and they arrived there sometime in late sixty-five. In around July of sixty-six, Alan was drafted into the army, where he did his basic training, somewhere in California, I don't know, and his infantry training. He arrived in Vietnam on December 22nd, 1966. He celebrated his twentieth birthday on July 7th, 1967. On February 26th, 1967, a large hostile force attacked his night position, killing nine of his fellow brothers, including PFC Alan Katz. He was buried, as you go through your research, he was buried in the memorial cemetery in Glover City, California. Now, I visited the New Jersey Memorial three times in my, in the twenty-five years that it's been there, since 1988. And whenever you go to any memorial, like the cemetery, and you visit your parents or your relatives, it never goes further than one or two. I never got to see Nick, I mean Alan's name, because I never looked for it. And then, last year, while I was part of the Vietnam Veterans, Passaic County Vietnam Veterans Memorial Wall in Wayne, I was on the committee to identify the eighty-four sons from Passaic County who were killed in Vietnam. The wall, when it was dedicated in New Jersey, had fourteen-hundred-and-forty, eighty-four names, including one woman. So, I started researching, I wanted to make sure that Alan and all my thirty-two sons and the brothers from Passaic County were all on the wall. They were all on the wall, except Alan Katz. So, I researched it and got in touch with the Vietnam Veterans of America, which is authorized to put the names of the veterans who were killed on the wall in Washington. And they said that Mr. Katz's family lived in Santa Monica, California, his mother Esther and father Hyman, and his two younger brothers, Jerry and Ricky. So that's why he's in, he's one of the five thousand sons killed in California.
Beautiful.
Okay. But when he was buried there, his father, his parents, put on his tombstone, under his name, "New Jersey." Okay? So now I'm saying, what's going on? I'm researching, and believe me, you can find everything you want on the website, there's no doubt about it. And I'm so glad that I, someone showed me how to do it, and I got the information that we needed for our brother and our son. Then looked more into the, and found out that in Santa Monica, California, and I spoke to the commander, as recently as yesterday, there's an Alan Harvey Katz Jewish War Veteran post, 118, still active today. I also spoke to his niece, his cousin, excuse me, whose father was the brother of Alan's mother. They owned a store in, like I said, on Monroe Street in Passaic for over twenty years. Now it's even getting better. So, I called up the New Jersey Memorial Wall in Homedale, spoke to the CEO, Amy Osborne, who never once, never once tried to talk me out of it. She was so supportive of every step we took to bring Alan home, it was unbelievable. She just needed all the information, the documentations, the pictures, and we sent it. We sent the pictures like this, "New Jersey." We were called by the Asbury Newspaper, the headline "Patterson Native to Be Added to the Vietnam Memorial Wall." And it's happened before, as more recently as two years ago, a Vietnam veteran that was killed in action was put in Pleasantville, Pennsylvania. Well, we have Pleasantville, New Jersey, and the correction was made, and two years ago, Mr. Fallen Son, Goslin, was put on the wall. So, in the article, he asks, and me and my friend Don, who went to school, who lived, who grew up with Alan, we wanted to be identified as two Vietnam veterans from Patterson, who let everybody know about Alan Katz. It's not about us, it's about our brother. Well, after all that information and a ride to the memorial in Homedale, Don and I, and a couple other Vietnam vets, who are very much involved with helping veterans today, all veterans, men and women, you know my reputation for over fifty years, I never forget a brother or sister. They come only second to my wife, my four children, and my four grandchildren. We went down there with more stuff, and Amy, oh, let me tell you something, she felt like our big sister, okay, we were older of course, but she made us feel like Alan, PFC Alan Katz, was home.
Beautiful.
And then she said that Don and I, pick a date to bring Alan Katz back to New Jersey, where he put on, his parents put on his stone. So I am giving you this paperwork, including our mayor, to put something together from his town that he grew up with, okay? And, you know, we're gonna be down there, of course, I'm inviting you to go, it's exit 114 on the Parkway, the New Jersey Wall, on April 27th at eleven o'clock, we picked a Sunday, so that people can not say, "I had to work." Even if you went to church, go to seven-thirty Mass, it's a better one anyway. But my point is, is that the information that we've accumulated over a year, and over forty-one years, were so important. So finally, I just wanna say that if anyone knows of a veteran, of any war veteran, this person in front of you and other veterans can help, maybe we missed something over the years, you know? Maybe, no? Let us know, let us know. You got one?
Yes.
There was nine out there, there's eight and the president. So, we're here, and anybody could find me, because I still live in Patterson. I'm not going on, the only time I'm moving to Totowa is when I'm underground, not on tile.
So, Mr. Van Cherry, April 27th, 11:00 AM, correct?
What?
The day is April 27th, 11:00 AM.
April 27th, 11:00, Homedale, Vietnam Memorial, New Jersey Vietnam Veterans Memorial Wall, it's exit 114 off the Parkway, and program starts at about eleven. And while I'm also here, I wanna mention, we totally support the Veterans Council and the twelve, twenty thousand veterans that live in this city, okay? From World War II to Afghanistan, Iraq, Desert Storm, we support the movement of naming Main Street Veterans Way, we appreciate that, Mr. Jackson. We also support...
Councilwoman Memms.
Mr. Jackson, initiative about putting the pictures of our fallen brothers, sisters, mothers, fathers, husbands, wives. I mean, you go to Totowa, Elmwood Park, Woodland Park, Little Falls, North Haydon, you feel like you're in a Norman Rockwell picture, because they honor their veterans and their sons, daughters again. Let's Patterson be one of them.
Absolutely.
Okay? Let's be able to go down the street and say, "Hey, I got my son." You have to know that two-hundred-and-seventeen Patersonians were killed in the Civil War. Six-hundred-and-eighty-two Patersonians were wounded in the Civil War, out of eleven-hundred men, that's a ninety-two percent of casualty, okay? Over four-hundred veterans from Patterson died in World War II, twenty-one from the Korean War, three from the Iraqi War. Thank God we didn't lose any in Afghanistan. You want me to keep going? Hundreds were killed, hundreds were killed during the First World War, I can't get the complete number, but I know what, how many got killed in the Second War, because the World War I monument at the Hill of Heroes tells you their names, okay? So, so many of us from Patterson have gone and prepared to die for our great country, our great state, our great county, and our great Patterson. So I wanna thank you, Council President, if there's any information you need from me, I'm here.
Thank you, Mr. Van Cherry, I just wanna, once again, reiterate what I mentioned before, I just wanna say thank you, you're doing an outstanding job supporting our veterans, you never stop working, you constantly out there looking for resources, you know, helping our veterans, it's amazing the job that you're doing. So I know I have Councilwoman Memms, and right after, Councilman Jackson, Councilwoman Memms?
Yes, so, thank you so much, Mr. Van Cherry, we know that you are a legend in our community, you have been a trailblazer, advocating, fighting, serving, have risked your life and sacrificed for all of our veterans, so we wanna thank you and commend you, but I do wanna put it on record that I sponsored the street naming for Veterans Way. Councilman Jackson has done, he's doing the banner work, but I sponsored the street naming, it was my idea, so I just wanna put that on the record for you, so that you'll be aware of that. On this date, I don't see the paperwork, I don't know if you gave it to anyone, the paperwork that...
Well, that's one of another reason I'm here, is I'm hoping that someone from the family, friends, who went to school twenty with him, or East Side High School, as you can see, there's a picture of Alan.
Do you have the year?
Right there, and...
Can we have that copy?
You have everything I have here, in your file, didn't I gave...
We didn't get it.
There were two in each folder, and one for the Council President, and one for the mayor.
Okay, fine, if you could share that information with us?
I have that first.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson.
Thank you, Brother V, first of all, the work you do goes without saying is enormous, and I have to say, I don't know what your wife is, how she's treating you, how she's feeding, you look like you're getting younger these days versus getting older, but I was gonna acknowledge that as well, and never take credit for things that I do not do. Apparently now, I've been educated that Councilwoman Memms is the one who sponsored the street. Maybe she could sponsor the flags, because I think the flags all around Memorial Drive would mean, would be so much more than a simple street sign, saying, but putting those faces and names of the individuals, as you're pointing out today with this gentleman, and I guess it'd be a lot easier, more palatable to get through, so I don't mind. You never see me running to, I have to put my name on legislation, as long as it gets done, it gets done. But I do have a question for you, relative to his, the addition of his name, was, is it just added to the bottom of the list? How's that done? Because, I mean, we've, since his time when he's lost his life, there's been many other names that's added, they just add it to the bottom of the list, or is it reamended? How does that work?
Well, what happened, I'll give you the data, in 1988, in the center of what you dedicated the wall in Homedale, there were fourteen-hundred-and-eighty-four names, and over a year...
Use the mic. Mr. Van Cherry, catch us on mic, please, thank you.
There were fourteen-hundred-and-eighty-four names with one woman that killed in Nam. And over the years, there've been situations like Alan Katz, he grew up eighteen and a half years in Patterson, he celebrated his twentieth birthday on January 7th in sixty-seven in Nam, turned twenty, within a month and a half, he was killed in action. But because he was drafted into the military in Santa Monica, California, and is buried out there, he was, he was not put on the jersey wall. The wall, and Osborn told me that they go by what the Bible, which has the eighty, fifty-eight thousand sons' names, in the Bible we call it, all the names of the sons. He was put there, because his address is California. There was a gentleman recently put in there, Goslin, like I said, he was, he was from Pleasantville, New Jersey, but they put down Pennsylvania. Right here, a couple, a couple months after we, with the family of Melvin Taylor, when they called me and said, "Mr. Van Cherry, our son's not on the wall," our plot, okay? We found out that he was six weeks in Vietnam, a proud United States Marine, he was critically wounded, and he would succumb to his wounds in East Orange, New Jersey, a year later, okay? He wasn't on the wall, because he was still alive, even though he suffered, but when Mrs. Taylor came to me, he graduated from school twenty-eights, you know, and we followed the process, so we called Washington, at that time with the service officer in Passaic County, and what did they do? You know Patterson with two Ts in Georgia too? They put Melvin Taylor's name on the wall, in the Bible, Patterson, Georgia. Let me tell you something, if I had an AK-47, there would've been some flying rounds. So, we called, we called Washington, and the correction was made, with one T, Patterson, New Jersey.
Thank you.
So it happens, it does happen, and also, all thirty-two of our sons will officially be on the New Jersey wall with PFC Katz. So it happens.
Councilwoman Cotton, that's another question, if Councilman Jackson finished?
I'm finished, thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Cotton?
Thank you, I just wanna say to you, Mr. Van Cherry, for many years that we have known each other, and I can truly say that you have been fighting really hard for veterans. I'm coming from a veteran family, my grandfather, World War I, my father, World War II, my brother, Vietnam, Desert Storm, you know, all those, all my cousins in the military, and I try to say to young people that there's many benefits of being in the military after coming out. You know, sometimes you find that it's hard, when you do come out, you don't get the support, but we have these veteran council like yourself, organization like the county, where they help veterans to get back, get started back again. But I just wanna say, I commend you for all the hard work that you have been doing for many, 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 many years. I've been around to see you do that, you know, I've seen you at the McBride, on Union Avenue, over here at the, at the, at the post office, you know, dedicating the time, and I think that we need to understand in community, veterans going to war for us, you know, I remember my brother being in the war, and you could hear bombs dropping, like just dropping, he would put on his tape recorder, and just, so he say, he wanted us to hear what a lot of men and women had to go through, and being overseas and being in countries that, you know, you don't know anything about, and so I just wanna say I commend you, and maybe my husband Dan might notice this young man, because he graduated, my husband graduated in nineteen sixty-four, and he came out in nineteen sixty-five. So you know, as you said, fifty-something years later, to be recognized and to be put, you know, put, to have your name put somewhere, but I just want you to continue to do the work that you do for veterans. Veterans are very important, I actually, I've gone to a couple houses for the last couple weekends, because you know, veterans, you can be disabled twenty-five percent, you can be disabled fifty percent, you be disabled a hundred percent, and you get certain benefits. And I wanna say to young people out there, if you have not thought about going into the military, you know, you really need to look at it, because there's so many benefits. I've traveled all over the world because of my brother, you know, I went to Frankfurt, Germany, you know, I went to Paris, I went to Belgium, I've been to those countries, I've been to the, in the United States, Albuquerque, New Mexico, you know, Louisville, Kentucky, you know, and you get a chance to travel, and I think that is so important, but I commend you, Chris Van Cherry, and your wife, because she's right by your side, Marie is right by your side every step of the way, so continue to do what you do for our veterans, and for our city of Patterson. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Mr. Van Cherry, thank you so very much.
One last thing, Council President, I just want you to know that I, today, you, Patterson is my final delivery, because I've been to Passaic with the mayor Laura and his, and Virginia, his secretary, I've been to the county meeting tonight, to present them, because, and to our hometown of Patterson. I touched all the towns that were affected by Alan Katz and his family, and that meant more to me, to make sure that everyone can't say tomorrow, "Oh, we didn't know about that." You all know about it now, and if it's only one person representing this council, and the mayor coming down to honor a fallen son, please come, I won't say anything more. And as far as my wife Anna Murray, she's the best medicine God ever gave me. God bless America, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Van Cherry, council members, now we've been joined by our Councilman Alaric Friudin, and our Councilman of the City's War, Abraham, so let's start the meeting. Madam Clerk, good evening everyone, on behalf of the Patterson Municipal Council, we welcome you to the workshop session on April 8th, 2025, it's 7:18 PM. The meeting is now called to order, Madam Clerk, please, call the roll.
Yes, Council President, roll call for the workshop session of April 8th, 2025. Councilwoman Cotton?
Here.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Here.
Councilwoman Memms?
Here, ready to serve.
Councilman Omar?
Here.
Councilman Uden?
I'm here, Madam Clerk.
Council President?
President, Madam Clerk.
Okay, thank you, we have six present, three absent.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, please read the statement of compliance.
Statement of Compliance with the Open Public Meetings Law, 2024-2025, April 8th, 2025, 6:30 PM. Adequate notice that this meeting was compiled and disseminated in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Law in the following manner. One, the annual notice of regular meetings and workshop sessions of the municipal council was compiled for the year 2024-2025 on or about July 1st, 2024. Two, a schedule of the regular meetings and workshop sessions of the municipal council for the year 2024-2025 was duly transmitted on or about July 1st, 2024 to the North Jersey Herald News, The Record, The Arabic Voice, The Italian Voice, The Passaic County Pulse, Dominican News, La Cisca International, El Especial, The Patterson Press, The City Post News, Tap Into Patterson, The Weekly Bangla Patrika, in addition to any other publication duly requesting such notices. Three, the schedule of the regular meetings and workshop sessions of the municipal council for the year 2024-2025 was prominently posted in the lobby of City Hall, first floor, in the place reserved for the announcements of this type. Four, the schedule of the regular meetings and workshop sessions of the municipal council for the year 2024-2025 was duly filed with the municipal clerk. And five, a copy of the schedule of regular meetings of the municipal council was mailed to any person who requested and paid the fee authorized by the Open Public Records Act. Council President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, now let's start with payment of bills, Councilwoman Memms, payment of bill...
Thank you, Council President, I'm here to present the payment of bills on tonight. The payment of bills total eleven million, seven-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand, three-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars and sixty-eight cents. Half, or sixty percent of this bill is payroll for our employees of six mil, six-point-two-seven-two, six-three-six-point-eighty is for payroll, we have payments for, two payments for solid waste, we have a workman's comp, and we have another case, a settlement case that's included. I moved these items forward, Council President.
Thank you, do we have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Memms, second by Councilman Even, roll call, Madam Clerk, on payment of bill.
Roll, calling the payment of bills in amount of eleven million, seven-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand, three-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars and sixty-eight cents. Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. You know, once again, you know, even in, looking in tonight's chair, BA being empty, vacant by representative from the BA's office, I respect and appreciate Brother Ramirez's competency, but quite frankly, he's not the BA, nor is he a representative of the BA's office. And, you know, in, in looking at a letter that was prescribed, or written by, or presented by Councilman Velez, which speaks completely about the irresponsible spending of various positions of various employees, I can't in good conscience accept and vote in the approval of a budget, that we are paying two assistant BAs six-figure salaries, and yet not one of them have ever turned up to this meeting to be accountable for the council's concerns. And further, if you look at the lack of response, in fact, there's been... And further, if you look at the lack of response, in fact, it's been, it was noted in this letter that was written or presented by Councilman Velez, the lack of response has been, has been nonexistent. And yet, this council, in the authority that we do hold in approving the spending of the city, we continuously talk about what a phenomenal job is being done and just blindly voting yes. And just in mere protest, I cannot support this as usual. Madam Clerk, my vote is no.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Councilwoman Mims?
Thank you. In the absence of our finance chair, who is in training, prior to coming out to this meeting on tonight, our finance committee met, we had 12 items that we discussed, which are on this, that we will discuss more in details later on tonight. With that being stated, the items that are presented in this bills list are to pay our employees and also to pay services rendered. My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Omar?
Yes.
Councilman Uden?
My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Council President?
My vote is yes, Madam Clerk, on payment of bill.
Thank you. The votes are five in favor, one against, three absent. The payment of bills is hereby adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So before I continue, it's important that the community understand that every week we most vote on payment of bill because our employee deserves to get paid. On this payment of bill, we have 6,272,636 dollars to pay our employees. So most of the money is on payment of bill. It just is important that the community knows and understand that. We have our director of public safety here, so I know there's a few items for public safety, and it's item 33 to 36, Director.
Council President?
Councilwoman Mims?
So I, I just want to say that the items that are on here for police and fire, all of these items have been properly vetted through committee. One item is for our grant for our behavioral health. The other one is for the application for our Burn, Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Program, which we are doing again. And then it's for the partnership for our pistol range program. And then the last one is to award, to authorize a contract for cooperative again. So we met in committee and we were fine. So I recommend that all of these items go on consent.
Council members, item 33, 33 through 36, will go on consent. If there's any question, we have the director present. Also, we have item number 50, which is resolution rectifying an application to the FY24 Emergency Management for Performer Graham and Emergency Management Assistant, item number 50.
Yes.
Which it was discussed also at the committee meeting, and it should go on consent as well.
On consent as well.
Thank you, Director.
Thank you so very much.
No problem.
Appreciate you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate it, Director. So, okay, very quick, Councilman Jackson, you have an item on the, on this agenda that you have, that you have questions?
Can we, before, before we do that, can we just talk about the items that are removed? Can we just, yeah, there are items that are removed?
So Madam Clerk, we have, there's two items that will be removed, which is item 61, Corporation Council is removed, and we have item number?
30 and 31.
Item number 30 and 31 by legal also will be removed, Madam Clerk, out of this agenda. So, Councilman Jackson?
30, 31, and 61.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Because we're waiting for additional information.
There's additional document that we need, so we put them on the side for now.
What did she say?
I'm sorry. Councilwoman, can you turn your mic on? I can't hear you.
61, you took that one off too. The sewer, I'm sorry. With the sewer, you took that one off.
Yeah, so just, just to give some clarity, in our finance committee, we had a discussion and we need further discussion because we're going into our introduced budget season. And so we want to make sure that we're not taxing our residents twice around the same time. So the recommendation was to remove the sewer tax at this present time until there's further discussion.
Thank you. Okay.
All right. Thank you, thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Jackson?
Thank you, Council President. So before I actually speak in the item, I know many of you have know, I wrote this, this item several months back. But before I speak in the item, and it's only because you commented after the payment of bills, and it's, and again, only specifically because I was speaking to someone in the audience with regard to the measures of power. Understanding that there's a necessity to pay our bills, I'm very cognizant of that. But the council and the mayor, the, our former government is equal power. The mayor has the power to hire employees. We have no say so over that. The mayor directs the employees to render the services. If your garbage is not being picked up, the council has no say so over that. If your recycling is not being done, if the roads are not serviced properly, all the function of the mayor. The council's ultimate authority and ultimate power lies in our ability to withhold payment and to pay bills. So if we're here only voting on items and only approving, we've just rendered the authority that we have. The way we hold the mayor accountable is by holding his purse strings. And if we're not going to hold the purse strings, yes, if there's important items that need to be paid, police need to be paid, city workers need to be paid, we have the ability to separate those items and don't pay the nonessential items. And we hold those items nonpayment until the things that we're asking for is getting done. Just wanted to point that out as a point of clarity because it's often said after our vote, no, that we got to pay the bills. Yes, we do have to, but we also, it's more important to be diligent in holding the mayor accountable. Now, Council President, I don't know which, which number it is.
Item 53, Councilman Jackson.
Item 53. It is a resolution for an ordinance that I wrote to implement a requirement.
It's an ordinance. Yeah, that's an ordinance.
It's an ordinance. Correct. It's an ordinance that is, to implement a requirement that all multi-dwelling buildings would have to provide security and 24-hour surveillance. I, I have to apologize to Corporation Council because I had presumed that there was no answer that was given to me. But I also have to, you know, give a measure of grace because in the clerk's office, where there's normally nine to 12 individuals that are working, there's currently two and the deputy clerk that's, that's holding the position down. And where, there are only two, two.
They have five.
And how many are there?
Nine.
Okay, so, so the entire office is how many? It's not?
We've got four in the clerk's office.
So five and, five and four?
Council members?
They got right now, six in their office.
Okay.
They got six. Yes, they completed, but I'm just saying.
Five and four is nine.
Right.
Okay? And in the, in the council's office, there's two. Two secretaries that are servicing nine council members. So if there was an oversight, and I'm only trying to make a point, Council, Councilwoman, if there was an oversight of me not receiving the email from Corporation Council, it is a, it was the, the, the issue where there's a great deal of work with all, all of these, these packets that need to be created, that come in from various departments, various divisions, are handled by one or two people in, in the clerk's office. And I'm making note of that because, yet again, when the services are not being rendered, it is not the council that hires the replacements in, in these offices. That, that job is primarily done by personnel. So if these women are being placed under duress, and let me, let me also point out that they can work excessive amount of hours, they're not being paid the overtime as well. But, so my apologies, Corporation Council, I did receive your, your notice, I did review it, and I wanted to be able to, Council President, to go through it today. I, I know that Corporation Council sent, sent it again today, and I'm in, I'm, I'm not in agreement with his, 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 his legal opinion. And so if we can give him an opportunity just to outline his opinion and we can kind of have a discussion on whether or not this item should go forward.
Okay, so, so I'll open the mic to Corporation Council. We also have that discussion and I, the information that I have is that Ben David from the legal department has been assigned to work with Councilman Jackson on this specific item, on item 53, to find a way to bring, bring it into, into, in front of the council, but I'll open the mic to Corporation Council.
Yes, thank you, Council President, and thank you, Councilman Jackson, for your inquiry. So first and foremost, I must say, I think, I think the proposed ordinance is a very good idea and I, and I think it has real application to serve our residents. So please don't mistake anything that I say as sort of, as in some way, shape, or form minimizing the potential impact of the ordinance. But I do have some legal concerns. And in order to further assist you to move this legislation forward expeditiously, I've assigned a member from the law department to work with you specifically hand in hand to assist you in, in making any legal corrections that need to be made. And then I respectfully request that the matter also be shared with Economic Development Director. I believe the director's in attendance, I see the assistant director, so that any practical issues and policy concerns, which is within the purview of, of council, could be addressed. But I respectfully submit that the most expeditious and fastest way to get this done is I welcome you to my office, we'll accommodate you at your time. And like I said, I don't normally do this, but I've assigned an attorney specifically to you for this matter to ensure that it can, it can be drafted so that there are no legal issues and that the, the good merits of this proposed ordinance can proceed expeditiously. And unfortunately, that's all I have to say at this point.
Thank you, Corporation Council. So, Councilman Jackson, so.
Yes, thank you, Council President. So, one, with all due respect, and I don't need to have an attorney assigned to me, I'm very much capable of, of comprehending and understanding and writing the legislation, which I have been doing. My concern is your response, it wasn't Ben Davis' response. The law department has reviewed the proposed ordinance submitted by Councilman Jackson, we see attachment A, which seeks to impose, et cetera, et cetera. The law department respectfully recommends the city, let me get to, to the portion, because... I don't know what is required, Council. Okay, so it's towards the end. Such while the law department cannot sign off on the, the legality of Councilman Jackson's proposed ordinance, what I'm asking now is what is the legality complications? According to what you've quoted here, you, you outline that we should mirror Newark's ordinance, which I totally disagree with. We, Newark is building buildings that consist of 900 units, 2, 2,500 units. So the likelihood of a building having more than 100 units in Newark is very much more substantial. Here, we're allowing developers to knock down two-family houses and they're building 12-family units, they're building 20-family units. That would mean we would exempt all of those buildings from being required to provide the necessary security and the necessary surveillance. Right now, if you look citywide, the issue that we're having is our police department is understaffed, undermanned, and it's being overworked. So when, and, and through the, the approval and the workings of the mayor's office, through the planning board, we see an excessive amount of new constructions, construction buildings being erected, and none of these buildings are in excess of more than 100 units. Further, you know, I wrote something back to you just to outline the fact that, you know, I respect and appreciate your perspective, but I do not agree. Although I do agree with some of the components of Newark's resolution, Newark's ordinance being relative and pertinent to Patterson, it, the ruling that was made at, for, on the Constitution of New Jersey has absolutely nothing to do where it will outline a legal, to, let me not misquote you, but you can't sign off because the legality of Councilman Jackson's proposed ordinance. So there's no legal bearing. So with regard to, and, and, and I'm trying, I mean, this, this presentation is really, should be done for council members to understand this because council ultimately has the vote. And, and my brother Omar, just for a point of clarity, I know you're kind of, you're new to this situation, we are the legislators. Corporation Council is not a legislator. He is a legal authority that is, should be reviewing what we, what we're prescribing, what we're writing. He's not the one to be writing the legislation. Unfortunately, we don't use that practice here. He writes all the legislation, and then if I write my own, apparently, there's, we have a consistent problem with it. So what I'm trying to dispel here, and I want the public to be able to hear this, is that what I wrote is not, does not have legal issues. In fact, it, it, it speaks directly to what the state and what's been ruled upon. Council President, you just allow me one, a few more moments. So additionally, with respect to the implementation of the proposed fine in accordance with NJSA 4049-5, the statute permits the municipality to impose a fine greater than $1,250, provided there is a 30-day period which allows said, said owner to be able to abate. And that's the last line within that, that, that state statute. So with, 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 uh, contradicting your, your, your evaluation of the fact that, you know, NJSA 4049-5, it disallows, and we, we don't have the authority to take away the judge's ability to impose fines from a minimum to a maximum. Clearly, in the ordinance, in the last line, I mean, in the state statute, it says that any items that is of zoning violation, we can charge in excess of $1,250. We can outline what that fee is going to be, and the judge does not have the ability to override it. What we see in Patterson is that the judge often comes and might, you know, combine fines or dismiss fines. In this instance, I want owners who have buildings that have 100 units or more to be charged $100 per unit if they do not provide the required security and provide, and, and the necessary surveillance. What we're watching here is the administration is trying to block for these, these developers. Lastly, Council, Council President, a plaintiff attacking an ordinance, this is directly from the state statute, I mean, I'm sorry, this is directly from the court's ruling. The court has already ruled on this where Newark had a, had a, an ordinance that Corporation Council is talking about. It was challenged, therefore, it is allowing us to lean on the fact that this challenge was won. Corporation Council is saying, because their ordinance has already prevailed, we should use exactly what they've written. And again, I'm not going to reiterate, but our city is different than Newark. Lastly, here's, here's the, the language in its entirety. Well, not in its entirety, but, but, you know, for the most part. A plaintiff attacking an ordinance as arbitrary and unreasonable bears heavy burden. First, People's Bank versus Medford Township, 126, New Jersey, 14413599A. Article 4, Section 7, Paragraph 11 of the New Jersey Constitution provides that any law concerning municipality corporations formed for local government shall be liberally construed in their favor. In addition, the city of Newark, its charter under the optional, optional municipal charter law, NJSA 469A, which is completely different than the one you quoted in your legal opinion, which notes that the general grant of municipal power contained in this article is intended to confer the, the, the grades of, of 186th power of local self-governing consistent with the Constitution of the United States, which basically outlines, Council, Council President, that based on Newark's argument, they're saying that any municipality has the authority to enact such a, an ordinance. It does not have to mirror Newark's ordinance. We can take some elements from Newark's ordinance, but from my, what my perspective, what I'm trying to acquire or accomplish here is making sure that all of these smaller buildings, the ordinance that I wrote starts at four units. We can raise it to, to five at the minimum, but we know that these facilities that, that are being built on these corners, there are four, five, seven, eight units, all up Governor Street, Carroll Street, all within the 404, we see these, on a, on a 25 by 100, we see four, five units that have been built. Those units, if they're, these developers want to come to our community and they want to make money in piling up more residents in a small area. to make money, and piling up more residents in a small area, they should be held accountable with providing the additional security that these residents need.
Understood.
So, so, Council President, lastly, I'll just say this.
Please, Councilman Jackson.
Unless Corporation Counsel has something that he can, you know, directly contradict anything that I've just outlined, I'm making sure, I'm, I'm not asking, I'm saying, this is requiring, this, this item has been on the workshop agenda multiple times, I have no problem with sitting down with Mr. Ben David, um, you know, he could come to my meeting place, I'm not going into their, to their office, and if he has any issue that he wants to outline, or we could communicate via email, I could function like a, a professional.
Okay.
And, but this item needs to be on the agenda, the upcoming agenda for a vote. It's been tabled way too long, and now that we only have one meeting a month, you, you talking about six, seven months, a year goes by before we get this thing approved.
So, 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 thank you, Councilman Jackson, but I'm very satisfied to hear that you are willing and ready to meet with Mr. Ben David, because that's been a problem. Our legal department is here to make sure that we don't get sued, to make sure that every legislation that we approve will be within the law, uh, you know, so, and, and for me, I'm very excited to hear that, that you're going to have that communication. I don't believe that if you work close with legal, we could come out with a, with a, a good resolution, a good legislation, that will help everybody. Now, let me remind everybody, this legislation include, include private developers that are building, to force them to make sure that they get private 24/7 security, where you have 50% senior. But now, I don't, I don't see that the problem, most of those units that, that you see building, they have state-of-the-art camera, you see those cameras in the corner, much better than, than the one that the city has, uh, and they, they, the smart, the, the, the door, I mean, it has technology at the door, state-of-the-art camera. The problem that I see is within, in the Housing Authority, those senior building, that I pass by some senior building, and they have nobody in the door, in the morning, in the afternoon, at night, see, if we want, if we want to talk about our senior, let's have the conversation really about our Housing Authority. Penns wrote on Heritage Place, in the beginning of the contract, they agreed to have 24/7 security on Heritage Place. Guess what? They switch into 24 hours a week. So now, if we want to have this dialogue, but I, I want to continue with the agenda, I'm looking forward to have this conversation.
Council President.
Another time, just give me a minute, Councilman Jackson, I believe that I give you like enough time, you, you make your point across, and I know you want to meet with me, you will meet with Ben David, and I'm willing to collaborate with you, but my, my, my concern comes with, with, with the Housing Authority, and those senior building that, that have those senior, that I don't see the security there we're supposed to be, so, but I got to move forward, because I know...
No, 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 Council President, according to the guidelines of how we function, I, if you're going to be but, anything that I say, I definitely, I am allowed.
Not rebutting.
Another, you did rebut, you negated, you negated something.
As, as the housing, my concern, I'm just saying that you will meet with Ben David, and we could move forward, it's fine.
No, I don't need to meet with Ben David to move forward.
But you don't meet with Ben David, that's you, Councilman, it's up to you.
My point to you is this, Council President.
I'm just recommending that to you, you don't have to meet with nobody if you want.
My point to you is this, if, you just named Pennrose, who, when they go to zoning, and, and our director's here now, when they go to zoning, a part of their application process, they're often required to do certain things, sometimes they are required to use trash compactors, they're required to provide security. We don't have any measure on the books to hold them accountable when they don't do it. This will now, if they're getting a fine for $100 per unit on the first infraction, $250 for, per unit for the second, trust me, they're going to put these things in place. And further, just lastly this, I don't need to, if Corporation Counsel has any concept of anything that I've talked about that's illegal, when I'm quoting off what the state statute says, that doesn't outline anything that I've written in this ordinance to be illegal, I can have tea and crumpets with Ben David if you want me to. But it doesn't change the fact that what I've written is already legal as it stands.
I, I just want to say with all due respect, Councilman Jackson, and this, and I'm crossing with this, um, I'm insisting every Council member that wants to put legislation on the floor to have a conversation and guide us for legal, because we have to make sure that we are within the law in any piece of legislation. I don't want to put the city at risk, at, at risk of a lawsuit, out, that would never happen under my watch as Council President. When you see a legislation here, it's because it's been better, it's been ready to, it's been going through legal, and it's ready to be approved. That's the only thing I'm going to say. If it's not approved by legal, it's not on the agenda, as simple as that. Let's move by, let's move with public work.
No, Council President.
So I'm sorry.
I just got one question.
Uh, Councilmen Mims?
Yes, just a recommendation, 15 is a raffle, if we could put that on consent, item 15.
Let me, let me go with public work, and then we...
Okay, no, let's go.
They have a lot.
Yeah, we have, so...
Economic Development has a, well...
I know, the director, she's very happy there, she's real happy. So I think, um, item 37, there's just a regular item, Director for Economic Development, she liked to be at our meeting.
Council President, please, I'm just saying, all right. I'm still, I'm going to, I'm going to say to Councilman Jackson, I mean, I'm going to correct, um, I have to correct you about Madam Clerk and, and the secretaries, and I think what's happening is that the ladies are coming here to work, but they watch, and they got to do council meetings. See, they're not being told, I think, that they got to do council meetings, and then when, and, and then once they get here, they see, they be here till 1:00 or 2:00 o'clock in the night, and they're not going to stay. They're coming, sometimes, and we need to get more, but they're not staying because they got to do all of this, go back the next day, be back to work by 8:30, transcribe the meeting, that's a lot. That's a lot, you don't understand, and plus get phone calls, plus do the draft, do the resolution. If I was Madam Clerk, I wouldn't take not, not one item from any department after Thursday. Items are coming upstairs on Monday. That's horrible. They can't handle all these items coming upstairs, Monday, Friday, let's, you know, the cutoff should be a certain time, and I know Madam Clerk is looking for ladies, but the thing is, they might come, and they see, they watch TV, I ain't going to work at no city council office, I'm telling you, no, I ain't going, that's why we're not getting nobody, you can say what you, everybody can say what they want to say, I don't care. I see how those girls, I helped them with the phone calls, they come in there, people call the city council office for every single thing.
You're Green with him.
No, I'm not Green with him.
You're not Green with him.
With Jackson? Yeah, but I'm just saying, I'm, I'm, but, but, but they come here, you wait a second, you wait, they come here, but they don't stay.
Councilwoman Cotton.
They're not staying, that's what I'm saying, they're not staying.
Thank you.
They work two days, they're not staying.
He wasn't knocking.
Councilwoman...
No, no, he was knocking me, what I was saying. Yes, he was, so I know what he was saying, don't tell me what I, you wait a second. No, you wait, and I just want to say, I know them girls, Madam Clerk, need to get the secretary, come on, be realistic.
That's right.
How is secretary going to sit here till 1:00, 2:00 o'clock in the morning, and they got to transcribe the next day, come on. How they going to keep doing it? And it's like, I just want to say, and I work with them, and they work really hard, and I feel for them, but they got to listen to all of this, every other week, that's like, not easy.
He wasn't knocking.
That wasn't knocking, I'm telling you what they go through. I didn't say he was, he said they wasn't, you're not even listening, I'm not even going to, you're not listening.
Brother, the public portion is coming in the meeting.
No, I got one more thing to say, you know, come on, people want to think, they want to interrupt, you want to come in, they're not in here, they're not up in the city council, they're not here. We know, we're here.
Okay.
But I just want to say, Councilman Jackson, you have on this resolution, you said anything with four or more units, you kept saying 100, but you got on here, four more units.
That's too impossible.
Okay, that's all.
What'd you say?
You said four or more units.
I didn't say anything.
You know, four more units, you want 24-hour security with four more units?
Four units, thank you, Councilwoman, thank you.
Let me clarify, she asked a question, let me clarify.
No, no, I'm just saying, you got four on here.
Councilwoman, can you, can you, can you, can you give me a minute, Councilwoman?
Okay.
My ordinance, my ordinance does outline four.
Councilman Jackson.
Let's say four.
Newark's, which, which Corporation Counsel says, we should just copy Newark's.
No, you didn't.
He's, his, he says...
No, no, I'm saying, I'm going by, talk about yours.
I'm talking about mine.
Right, you said four or more units, that's it, that's all.
So, he says, we should copy Newark's.
Well, forget about what you said.
Can you please let me?
Right, I want to hear what you going to say.
His says 100, that Newark says 100.
Okay.
I said, we should do four.
Right.
So if a, if a person builds four or more units, they should be required to put cameras in their building, that the police department have access to, and it should be a mandatory requirement, understanding that four units may not be allowable for a 24-hour guard, but it should be 24-hour surveillance through the security systems, and it should be mandated from four units and above. Now, that, that's just for a point of clarity, and, and, and lastly, people don't leave the council office because they got to do meetings. People leave the council office because they're getting paid $38,000, $40,000, and then they lateral someplace else and make $70,000, and make double their salary and don't have to do, and these women who are working their asses off, are not giving the raises that they should.
Councilwoman, can you allow, Councilman Jackson, Councilwoman, I'm sorry, Councilman Cotton, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You got to stop disrupting the meeting like that, we have an agenda to follow. Let's go back to the meeting, we have public work, we have multiple items, and we're ready to open the public portion. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
So, um, so, let's call the director, where's Mr. Jackson from DPW, I know he's here, Mr. Billy is now with us, but I have our Director for Economic Development, the UEC Director, Director, you have, uh, there's, um, you have four items on the agenda, let's go with your items first, before we go, 25, item 18, Director, the UEC, Councilman.
So, yes, so the first item, if you could just come to the mic, both directors, just in case, the first item is award of a contract, the bidding process was followed, the scoring is attached, we're awarding a contract to Wells Cleaning, I recommended this is, uh, to go on regular, it's an award of contract, for number 18. Number two, is the submission of requests to UEZ for the two pocket parks that will be, yes, for 19th, consent for those, and then number 20 is the same thing, remember, we've done the 21st Ave streetscape in the past, the dollars are there, we can only utilize the dollars for that, consent as well for 20.
Okay.
Item number 60 is the economic development, this is for the purchase of two vehicles, police intercepting utility trucks, public safety, we want those on consent as well, but there is one item that will definitely need discussion, and we talked about this in our finance tonight, and that is on our first reading, and I know Director, item 54, in our discussion, we talked about the state's statute, and I know that you have problems with this item, so Director, if you could speak to item number 54.
Um, titles on, uh, with item, uh, Director, with item 54, we have that discussion at the, at the Finance Committee, but we, we will move, we will take this item out, because I want more discussion at the committee meeting with you on this item, okay? Because we're going to plug in, yes, we will, we will remove it out, we will send it back to committee, okay?
Okay.
So, because it's an additional component that we're going to include to match, to be in line with the state on this item, okay?
Okay, and then there's one more item, Council President, item number 55, it's a resolution to support a affordable house...
Oh yeah, I was, I was going to that one next.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, so this one, we know Patterson Habitat does a wonderful job, give, um, that gives people the opportunity to be first-time home buyers, and to put some sweat equity into their projects, where they're helping to build their own homes, I'm recommending that this item goes on consent as well. I mean, that it moves forward.
No, this is a resolution.
It's a resol, it's a resolution.
Correct.
Well, 55 is a resolution.
It's a resolution, it's on consent, or regularly, you want it?
It's on consent.
Okay, if there's no problem, we could have it in consent.
It's consent, it's not a first-treated item.
Um, just a second, Director Ramadas?
On the item, if the clerk can just correct the item on the agenda, it says $20,031,000, but the resolution is $2,031,000.
Right.
Thank you, Council President.
Yes, just to make sure, so, we're going to put it on with the necessary corrections, Council President, that we'll put this item on consent.
Okay.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
You can stay with us, Director, you don't have to leave. Okay, no problem, thank you so very much. Uh, Council members, before we continue with public work, um, the reason why Councilman Velasquez is now with us, because he has a death on the family, his brother passed away, he's out of state, um, you know, with the family, also Councilman Davila has been honored, um, out of state also as well, Councilman, uh, colleague was in, out of state, and his flight got delayed, he's just arriving into Patterson, he will be at the next meeting with us. Those are the three Council members that are now at the meeting, and that's the reason why, okay?
Council President.
Councilman Mims?
Um, just a recommendation, item 15, which is just a raffle, if it can go on consent, 15 on consent, um, item 16, consent.
Go on consent, 16, Madam Clerk, 15, 16.
Item 17, as we know in the past, we talked about, uh, this is myself and Councilwoman Cotton, we're honoring the life and legacy of Dr. Cecile Dickey, on consent, but identify that we are the sponsors and move the item, number 17. Um, 21 through 29, uh, on consent, but there will be conversations with the two, uh, with the owner of Habana, so, Habana is item...
The owner of Habana, the, no, the, item number, Habana is not, is item number, just give me a second, we have, is item 57.
Okay, so items 21 through 29.
21, 29, all consent, yes.
If there's any question, any concern about items from 21 to 29, all those are on young yard, and just renewal license, everything will go on consent, and, um, Councilwoman, the owner of Habana is here, and if I may, the reason why, there was some question, some Council member that has some concern about approving the, uh, the, uh, the entertainment license, because there's been some complaint about the community from Heritage Place about loud music, so, uh, we want to have you present here, that was the only concern that I have so far, as a Councilman of the Third Ward, um, we have a conversation, you explained that it was, it was coming from another business, so we will follow up, uh, but we just want to make sure that you are a good neighbor. We just want to make sure that you operate your business, that you provide service to our community, but at the same time, that you will be, that you, you will respect your community, your neighbor, and that you will keep quality of life a, a top priority in your area, that's, that's what we want. Uh, we're not here to stop people from doing business in the city, we need our local business, uh, because they are the one creating jobs, but we also want to make sure that you are a good neighbor, uh, with our community.
Thank you.
And, Council President?
Councilman, Councilman Mims?
Just to add to that, um, for all new licenses, you and anyone else that's coming new, make sure you put safeguard and parameters in place, bouncers, security guards, whatever it takes, to make sure you're cleaning up it around and in front of your property, and you respect your neighbors. I'm going to, I'm going to continue to say that, with your music, I know you have your time of, operation of your business, but be very cognitive, you have parents that have children, or there are seniors that live in those areas, so we don't need to hear your woofers at like 50 or 25, so just be very cognitive, or when it comes back for renewal, there will be deeper conversations, so we'll, we'll pass by them, sure, just to make sure, but just say on top, because we support business, we want you to do well, but we want to make sure that you maintain the quality of service and the quality of life that our residents deserve.
Absolutely, thank you, Councilwoman.
Council President?
That would go, um, consent, Councilman Jackson?
I just want to be extremely careful, no, you're fine, you can go have a seat, brother, I appreciate it. Um, just because of some of the comments that Councilwoman Mims just made, first of all, um, I, I definitely, I'm getting a great amount, a good amount of text messages, I think, Director, or whomever needs to speak on behalf of the BA's office, we should outline for the public why the Director of Health and Human Services is holding his chair, and why a representative from the BA's office is not there, but, I'm, I'm happy that you're here tonight, because normally you try to dip out of here early, no, no, just kidding, but, um, the measure of measuring sound is, comes through your office, and, um, this council worked on these, on resolutions, on, on, on the resolution quite some time ago, that we are required to have devices to measure, um, sound, I mean, you know, we, we're riding a thin line, I think Corporation Counsel just missed an opportunity to give some legal advice to, uh, Councilwoman Mims, because she just outlined to the gentleman that we're going to be, if you keep your music, if we don't have a proper way of measuring whether or not they're exceeding the decibel rate, we can't pass along threats to businesses that we're going to shut them down, just because they have their music, um, at a certain, uh, uh, volume. We have to be able to measure the decibels, and, and, you know, can you give us an update on what's, what's the status with the, um, we get a great deal of noise complaints, and, and we, this council will support it, and we're supposed to have equipment to measure the decibel levels, and what are, what are we doing? We're just violating people's rights?
Yeah, Council, Council President?
We're going to allow him to answer first?
Hey, Council members, there, I know I have Councilman Dean next up, but there's a question for the Director, Joe Herman, if you want to come and answer that question, Director?
The, the reason, the reason I wanted to speak...
I'm sorry, Director, just, just a minute, uh, Councilman Dean, you, you question?
It's the both thing.
Okay, Councilman Dean?
So, um, the, my constable colleague, Councilman Jackson, mentioned...
So, um, the, my council colleague, Councilman Jackson, uh, mentioned about the ordinance that I, um, worked with Corporation Council regarding this ordinance, and he, he's right. Councilman Jackson is, uh, absolutely correct that we hadn't.
I'm, I'm pretty sure I was already correct, but I appreciate you.
You are always correct. All right, so Councilman Jackson mentioned about the decibel meter. We, uh, that's true, that the ordinance we had about noise ordinance, it says if the noise is eighty-five decibel or higher, then the first time we'll issue a, uh, warning, second time it would be five hundred dollars, uh, up to five hundred dollars, um, fine. That was the case. So, we amended this, which is now we don't require decibel meter. If the noise can be heard from any direction, twenty-five feet distance from any direction from the source, police officer get, uh, issue, issue ticket up to, uh, two thousand dollars. So, there is no needed of any warning or anything. So, it's twenty-five feet distance from the source of the noise. That's the current ordinance.
Uh, thank you, Director Ramirez.
And we approved it, yes, that's true.
Thank you, Council President. I would have to look, um, into this a little further. We, I know the ordinance does mention the Health Department, but you know, we don't, we're not open after hours, so we rely on the Police Department and on, at the discretion of the officer that arrives. So, I would have to look to see how many complaints we've received, that we've investigated, what the outcome of that has been.
Very good. So, through the chair, Corporation Council, uh, uh, I'm not aware of what, um, Councilman Udine is talking about, but when, when this ordinance was written, we, this council does not have the ability or, and/or authority to override state legislation. The state statute had, there's a statute that, that, that outlines how noise is handled. This council doesn't have the authority to override the state statute.
We did not override, con, sorry, uh, through Council President. Oh, sorry. Can I just, can I just answer the question? We did not. So.
So, and, and with all due respect, this is a legal question. Corporation Council should be the one answering whether or not this, the, the ordinance that you're speaking of.
Well, he's gonna, definitely he's gonna answer anyway, but my, what my, what, the reason I jumped in, because we both worked together on this, and that's why I can recall it clearly. He is working on this so many, uh, rules and regulations every day, he may not recall everything, but I do since I came up with it.
So, what's the statute?
So.
What's the state statute?
I, I don't know exactly off my head, but.
That's why you should let Corporation Council speak to it.
Yeah, let, let him talk, that's fine.
What's the statute? I'm asking you, what's the statute? When, when I, when I do the work.
I can't, I can't recall anything from.
When I do the work that I do, I give you the statute.
Yes, Council President, that's exactly what I'm saying. Uh, Council President, I said, I don't know the statute, the exact what it says, but what I'm.
Because I have to validate when you.
Yeah, no, 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 do, do so. No, no, nothing wrong with it.
I wanna look it up to see what the statute says.
What I'm, what I'm trying to say is, what I'm trying to say is, and I want people to know as well, that when I, in, in twenty-twenty-two, when I was elected, right, I called, uh, for, for the noise issue, I called police officer multiple times. They show up, people turn the music off, they leave. So, I sat down with the Corporation Council, I said, something is not right with the ordinance, that when, uh, police officer showed up, they turned the music off, and police officer do not issue anything. The reason is, we found out the reason is, when the ordinance says that we, the sound has to have eighty-five decibel, uh, or more, our police officer do not carry that meter that to measure the, uh, the, this, the noise. So, what's the second option?
That's what I said. That's what I said.
The second option is the twenty-five feet distance. That's exactly what I'm trying to say.
So, what's the statute? That's all I'm asking.
So, Councilman, you, you hear that, you hear that, Councilman Dean, he doesn't, he doesn't have this statute, so.
We should ask legal, what's the statute?
Absolutely. So, so, I, I know, I know, uh, Director Ramirez, uh, but before Director Ramirez, Councilman Mims, you, I know you, you asked for the floor.
Yeah. So, they, they can provide the statute, but I wanna read, I wanna read our policy. Our policy is very clear. So, when I made this statement, I never make arbitrary statements. I made the statement based on this council amending the law.
Correct.
Based on the state ordinance, state always override city, that let us know that you did not really need to have in place, because we talked to public safety, they don't have a decibel reader to determine the, uh, the, the loudness of the noise, or what is the, you know, the pitch. So, in our state code, in our code under E three sixty-three-three-seven dash one, it said, "It is the policy of the City of Patterson to prevent excessive sound, which may jeopardize the health, welfare, or safety of its citizens, or degrade the quality of life." I said that when I spoke. I'm saying it again, it is our law. I just pulled it up. Corporation Council can expound if he needs to, but this is our law. It's on the books, three-three-seven. This council amended it because it did talk about twenty-twenty-two, there was in the, in the statement, a certain decibel amount, but because we don't have readers, we work with public safety, it was amended in alignment with the state, and we placed it on our books. So, that's why I'm saying to all new businesses, it's not putting the city in liability. I'm stating to you as a resident and the legislator of this community, and people are watching, and they're texting me, "Thank you." They don't even know where your businesses are located, but I'm sure anybody sitting in this audience, audience or watching agrees, they do not want to hear at twelve o'clock, one o'clock, and two o'clock, their, their windows shaking, right? And we don't need a decibel reader to tell us that your music is too loud.
Thank you.
It's like when we're sitting in our vehicle and somebody's behind you, and you can hear all the words to their, their music, it's too loud.
Well said, Councilwoman.
So, that, that's the point I'm making. It has nothing, new business owners, we have to make our statement to you. It is on our books. I, I am, um, anticipating that you will be great business owners. That's my anticipation.
Yes.
That you will do great, but we have to put that out there, because we get the complaints from the residents, and we have to make those phone calls to the Police Department when they're calling us at two and three and four o'clock in the morning. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman. I have, I have Councilman Dean, Councilman Jackson, but item number fifty-six, I know is, uh, the entertainment license for Roger Green. You guys have been a great business owner, and I know you own a multiple business in the city.
Yes.
You are a great, great neighbor for our community.
Yes.
And I just wanna say thank you. Just keep, keep doing business on the same direction, helping our community and working with your community. We never had any problem with you, and I know that we will not have problem, because you're being very responsible. Your item will be in consent. It's my council colleague doesn't have any problem, so we will vote next week on your item. So, you guys are good, okay?
And fifty-seven is consent as well.
Yeah.
Item fifty-seven is consent. I just wanted to go over the finance item.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President.
Right after, Councilman Jackson.
Thank, thank you, Council President. Again, um, I, I'm not, or we are not the legal expert, and, but we always, 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 we ca, always we come up with the recommendation and sit down with our legal expert, Corporation Council, and come up with the ordinance resolution, whatever we need to do, have done. Um, the ordinance that we, we amended in twerk in twenty-twenty-two about the noise, uh, with that ordinance, it's, it's gave actually option for both decibel or twenty-five feet distance. We improved a lot with this ordinance, because the police officer do not require to just prove that it's eighty-five decibel or higher, this, uh, the noise, or, um, or that they don't have to go and warn them. So, with that ordinance, that they can just go and issue a ticket. So, with that, actually, it kept our police officers, uh, you know, decision easier, and also, uh, our neighbors should know at the same time that they can turn off their music at the same time, if police, police officer can hear the sound from, from the distance, and they can still go, and they can turn their music off, still they can get their ticket. So, I would say that was, that's a good one. But we, every time we come up with certain things like this, we come to the Corporation Council, we, we sit down with him, and whatever laws allowed, that's what comes to the council. It's not really, we just write it down and comes here and voted, and it just passed the state statute. It doesn't work like this. So, even another one, I'm saying that, um, regarding, um, another crazy one that I worked with, uh, the, the, the parking sizes for the handicaps, handicap parking sizes, right? So, another one that I came up with, um, our handicap parking sizes were twenty-two feet, and so many applications coming every day, like, especially in the second ward and first ward section, some sections, like, every street has like hundreds of, uh, a handicap parking size. So, I went to three other municipalities and find out that their handicap parking sizes are eighteen feet. I actually measured, I videotaped myself that I measured, and I came out, came back and here and sat down with the Corporation Council, uh, can we minimize that number from twenty-two feet to eighteen feet? And he actually said, "Give me some time, look at the state statute, and if it's something to be done, I'm ready to do that." And we do, did that. Now, our parking, handicap parking sizes are eighteen feet. And so, we, we are saving actually four feet from each parkings from now. So, nothing that we come up with and we just write the, uh, ordinance and we vote for it, not really. It goes to the Corporation Council, to the expert, and they'll take a look whether something is doable or not by law, and then it comes to the chamber and we vote for it. That's the process. So, again, I am a teacher professionally. I'm not a lawyer. I'm a council member, you're a representative legislative body. We come up with the recommendation, but again, we, we go by, by laws. We don't actually break the laws and come here and vote for whatever we want. So, again, thank you, uh, President, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman, uh, Dean, uh, Councilman Jackson.
So, Councilman Udine, first of all, let me be clear. My intent is not at all to be combative. It's more or less to just educate you and educate everyone in general. You may be a teacher, but that's not the role you have right now. You're a legislator. You're a legislator. That means you have legislative responsibility. Within the confines of your legislative responsibility, that means that you must be able to cognitively read and understand the law. I don't rely on Corporation Council to tell me. He may tell me, but I'm gonna go research it and look at it to confirm, because ultimately, when I vote and I sign on this document, it is me, it is my vote. I am the legislator. He's not the legislator. So, that's the first thing. Secondly, with regard to the eighteen feet, see, part of our responsibility is holding the administration accountable for fulfilling what we're writing. So, you, you, you came up with a, with a pretty decent idea. Let's say we're gonna reduce parking spaces from eighteen to twenty-two. Now, what's happening is, they're not relocating poles. The poles are staying right where they are. They're painting it eighteen feet, so there's two feet in between handicap spaces that's not painted blue. That's not serving the public well. So, here you are, and see, it's our responsibility to make sure that they give us reports, and if we don't hold them accountable to the reports, so now, when it comes to this ordinance, right, what, what we're talking about, the noise ordinance, you're right, and it, and I agree with both of you, you and Councilwoman Mims. It would be more advantageous if the city did not, was not required to provide these measuring devices. But here's the thing, since you said in twenty-two, and maybe I, I was, maybe I was, I missed that meeting, I don't recall that, that item being amended. I do recall it being amended probably like in eighteen or seventeen, when Morris and Councilman, uh, Councilman, uh, Mendez was here, but it was amended then, and during that time, Dominic Stampaugh was the Corporation Council, and it was outlined, which I verified, that according to the state statute, this is what it had to be. Now, if the state has changed, I'm all in favor of that, but guess what? If you change the ordinance in twenty-two, then where's the reports on how many tickets have been written on, on, uh, uh, noise violations? We, we know that the city, they violate noise every single day, so where has, where's the tickets? If you're saying that you, you, you can't, you say, "Aye, aye, aye," you amended the ordinance, you got it approved through the council, where's the, where's the effectiveness? Where's the reports from this, from Corporation Council, from the BA's office, from the mayor, stating this is how many, from Jerry Spizziel, these are how many violations we've written since twenty-two? I can guarantee you that it hasn't changed. So, what's the point? We sitting here saying, "Oh, I did this, I did, I wanna sponsor, I wanna sponsor." We got a whole bunch of names on a piece of paper with no effectiveness to the community, because this council's not holding the administration accountable.
Um, council members, so, um, in couple of minutes, we're gonna start the public portion. Um, so, let's, let's get into our public work. Um, so, public work has items from thirty-seven all the way until forty-nine. I know the, um, um, yes, I know he left, and Billy, he's not here, he's, you know, he's out.
Council President.
Exactly. Director, so I, we have our engineer here, just in case. I know public, uh, the DPW committee met, so item thirty-seven, uh, which is a resolution establishing a process of administration and inspection of the federal funding transportation project.
Council President, I think, just based on looking at all the items, I think all of these items, um, can go on consent.
Yeah, so, uh, uh, Council President.
All the items could go on consent from thirty-seven through forty-eight.
Forty-nine.
I just wanna gain understanding on forty-nine, the rejection of the bids for, um, for the.
Recycling facility.
Which I don't need today, but you could put it on consent, and I'll reach out to.
Item number forty-nine is a resolution authorizing rejection of old bid and authorizing solicitation of a new bid.
Council President.
To remove tran, uh, and transport the disposed recycling scrap. I know Councilman Udine was at the committee meeting. If you have, uh, any.
Council President, yes, so this, uh, last item, uh, so, if we do not have questions from thirty-seven to, uh, forty-eight, all of them are resolutions, I, I think we all are okay with this, but James is here on behalf of the Public Works to answer any question. Forty-nine, just, we added just over the, uh, conversation over the phone, so I think he can, he can do, give in-depth, uh, answers. So, I think let's have the conversation now, and so you can make decision whether it's gonna go regular or consent. James is here. Uh, the engineer is here, right here.
I don't, I don't really need a conversation, because it's not, it's just a rejection and a rebidding, so I don't really need that. I can reach out to you in the office, like, I'm okay with it.
But any council members has any question?
Yeah, I, I'll call him, I'll call him privately, I don't need to have a...
And, and, uh, so I don't, so item from thirty-seven to forty-nine, they're all consent. Those are regular business from Public Work. But let me just, Item Forty-four is a resolution authorizing an extension of time, uh, for substantial completion of the Vera Ames Community Park. Uh, so that's, uh, and that was, um, related, we had a conversation about our building department. So I won't go on, it's just on consent. Um, that'll be a conversation for another day. Um, um, thank you to our engineer, uh, for being here. Now, we're gonna start public portion, members of the public.
Item fifty, did we say fifty?
No, Item Fifty, we already mentioned fifty to go on, on consent, Councilwoman.
Fifty-one on consent.
And fifty-one, it's a resolution approving twenty-twenty-five proclamation to improve the, for to improve the American healthcare system in Passaic County that could go on consent.
Fifty-one consent.
Uh, council member, if there's no other question on that.
And then, um, sixty-two, we could do that on regular.
Fifty, fifty-two, um, I'm okay with consent.
So, Item sixty-two is a resolution, um, to rename Carrington Drive, um, to sign your, sponsored by Councilman. So let's put it on regular.
We did, you want on regular?
Yeah, put, put fifty-two on regular, I think it should be fifty-two regular.
Sixty-two on regular.
Sixty-two, council member.
Oh, sixty-two.
Sixty-two regular.
Councilman, uh, Udine, you have Item Fifty-eight or Fifty-nine?
Uh, you can put on, on, on consent, yes.
Consent.
Wait a minute, un momento, por favor.
Oh, my God.
Okay, you want these on where?
Consent.
Okay.
Consent, yeah.
Okay.
Um...
So we have, we good with second reading?
At number seventeen, I wanna change that to regular. We wanna openly honor, uh, Dr. Cecil Dixie.
Just a minute, Councilwoman, just a minute. Item seventeen is a resolution honoring and memorializing the life and legacy of Dr. Cecil Dixie. You want it on regular?
Yes.
Okay. Madam Clerk, Item Seventeen, from consent to regular.
Hi, Mark, regular.
And Item Number Ten to Fourteen, um...
Wait a minute.
Okay, so...
Council President.
Uh, before, just one, and then, um, the second readings, we can move both of those forward.
Second reading, we're good, Madam Clerk, and...
And then the others we gotta talk about.
So, so we have first reading, seven and A, uh, Councilman Jackson.
Um, just for a point of clarity, and, um, I'm so excited that these meetings are always consistently being recorded. This was sent from a member of the public, um, and it's current. And in fact, they sent me the link. The New Jersey Noise Control Act of nineteen-seventy-one, codified NJSA thirteen, et cetera, authorizes the NJDEP to establish sound level standards with daytime standards at sixty-five decibels and nighttime standards at fifty decibels measured at the property line of the affected person. There is no possible way that we can measure decibel levels unless there's the appropriate equipment. I don't know what Councilman Udine is talking about, and I'm not sure whatever Corporation Counsel is talking about, but the state statute has not changed, it's still the same.
Right. So, we continue with Councilwoman Memes.
Uh, number nine, consent.
Council members, number, number nine, consent.
Number ten, consent. Eleven, consent.
Ca-, ca-, council member. So number ten is a resolution authorizing a war of contract to PNG.
Ten consent, yes.
Eleven consent.
Eleven, resolution authorizing the City of Patterson to enter to County, County, one second.
Twelve.
Number twelve, resolution authorizing a war contract with purchase of copy paper. Number twelve is consent.
And then number thirteen is, if we can have our CFO speak to...
So, number thirteen, our CFO.
Thirteen, fourteen, yes.
Let's do those two, let's move with, um, let's take care of public portion, it's eight-twenty, um, eight-twenty. Uh, so we come back after public portion with you, Mr. CFO, to talk about Item Thirteen, which is resolution authorizing the reading of calendar year twenty-twenty-five by title only. And then, Item Fourteen is a resolution authorizing the calendar year twenty-twenty-five emergency temporary appropriation.
And number eight, eight, number eight could move forward. So that way, we don't have, number eight is the municipal IDs. We're increasing the fees for that, that can move forward.
Director Ramirez, the municipal ID, uh, we still having the, the, um, so did, we still have the operation of the Health Department, the first floor?
Yes, sir. It is still at Health and Human Services at one-twenty-five Ellison.
Okay, okay.
And then, uh...
Do we have any data of how many municipal ID we, um, we're producing throughout the month? Our people are requesting those, those ID?
We do a few hundred a week.
Okay, it's important, Patterson, to let everybody knows that in the City of Patterson, we have those municipal ID. If you live in the City of Patterson and you need an additional ID, you could go to the Health Department, first, first floor at the end, uh, on the right side, there's an office there that you could request your municipal ID, uh, with proof of address and your picture, uh, they will produce an ID for you. And I know it's gonna be very helpful for a lot of our Patersonian that very often time need an additional approval, uh, you know, an additional ID. So it's there and it's functioning, and we also approving that also as well.
Council President.
Councilwoman Memes?
Um, Item Thirty-two, first of all, I wanna commend Director Ramirez in your department, uh, Item Thirty-two, I want it to be on consent. Um, when this came up last time, I made a request that we send out communication to our seniors so that they know that there is, um, gift cards and things that are available to ensure that they can get, um, uh, access to the farmer's market. So I'm really excited about that. I have another idea that we can expand it with our great brothers Produce, um, Aurel Woodav, so I would like to have a discussion in regards to that. So we can expand it, not just to them, but to a few other entities for our seniors to be able to get that. So for this one, um, it could be on consent, yes.
Thank you. Uh, so members of the public, we're gonna start the public portion. Councilman Jackson.
Is that, is that a grant or something she's outlining that we're buying gift cards for?
Yeah, Thirty-two is the senior nutrition program that they've been doing for a while. So when we, they brought it up last year, I was saying, I'm not sure how many seniors were aware. So they did a, a great job with like making sure, because the seniors, um, what's our lady's name? Hilda. Hilda, um, they go to the, uh, Fifth Ave Riverside Vet. So a lot of those seniors were giving the information out, and then they sent, so it has expanded.
So, so we're gonna utilize how much of a grant to buy? How many, how much are we spending?
Uh, he would have to say how much.
Council President.
Uh, Director Ramirez?
So it's the Senior WIC Program through the state of New Jersey. Um, it's not a grant, it's, and everyone who comes to either our senior center on Fifth Ave Riverside Vets or to my office at one-twenty-five Ellison and meets the eligibility requirement, they will be issued the voucher. And there is a list of vendors in the county where they can go and, and then purchase their vegetables.
Understood.
And Brothers Produce is currently on the list.
Very good. Council President, also, um, with regard to the, with regard to the IDs, are residents, are they required to provide a, um, an address?
Um, Director? Yes, you must provide proof of identification, which could be an expired, um, ID, or it could be a passport, or, uh, we, we have a list and we do have administrative discretion, and then they have to provide a passport.
Passport doesn't have an address on it?
No, for the address, there's a list of things, just like you would go to DMV, uh, PSENG bill, cell phone bill.
So, so there's not a situation where an organization is utilizing their address to register all the...
There could be shelters and programs to help the homeless can authorize.
But a shelter is a space that someone is staying in.
Correct.
But like, let's say, Kentoc is, and I, I'm not, I don't know if they are or not, I'm just asking. Like, organization like Kentoc, they don't have a shelter there, so if no one lives there...
They can provide a letter authorizing the individual to use that address as a mailing address.
Okay.
It's okay.
All right.
And then last but certainly not least, I know I'm just sitting in...
Thank you, Councilman Jackson, thank you.
Sitting in for the finance chair tonight, but number seven can move forward as well on first reading.
How many speaker do we have? We're not, we're not moving anything else, so that's through the public portion. And then we come back, so I would really wanna make sure that we take care of the community and that we could conduct city, we could continue our city business. How many speaker do we have?
We have twelve speakers.
We have twelve speaker. Um, before I call the first speaker, let me remind every resident that is here, you have three minutes to address the, address the council and administration. Please do it respectfully and no profanity in the chamber. Let, let's, let's represent our city the best way we can, with respect and dignity. Um, um, after the three minutes, I would respectfully ask you to, uh, move and allow the next speaker to use the, to utilize the three minutes. Madam Clerk, let's call the first speaker.
The first speaker is Jason Chavez. Thank you, Jason, would you please state your name and address?
My name is Jason Chavez, my address is two-twenty Linwood Ave, Patterson, New Jersey. Name's Alessandro Chavez, live in the same place.
My name's Kevin Chavez as well.
My name is Kevin Chavez, and we also all live in the house.
We are three of five brothers that grew up here in the City of Patterson. We have a business here in the City of Patterson that's registered here in the City of Patterson. The business here is a soccer academy, okay? And it's registered here in the City of Patterson.
Where?
When we were younger, we registered to the Patterson Soccer Recreational Program, but we never got calls, we never got told to come to a practice, we never got told, hey, come to this field, do this. We never got told any information about soccer recreational program, nothing like that. So, we, what we resorted to was to go to other towns. We couldn't play soccer here in the City of Patterson, the sport that we grew up playing and the, the sport that we love. And we have kids in our academy that come here from the City of Patterson. They take buses, they take Ubers, they take taxis just to go to the town that we're renting out a field in. And it's not fair for our coaches, it's not fair for my coaching staff, for all the players, all the parents, to make this sacrifice just for their kids to play soccer. Here in the City of Patterson, you guys do have a rec-, a soccer recreational program in Pennington Park, but from what we see, there's already problems going on there. For one, we already have people calling them out, saying that it's not a recreation program, more a travel competitive soccer club. As we see as well in the soccer league and the soccer website, you can see as well, search up on NCSA or EDP Got Soccer, that Unisamba Recreation is marked down as a recreation team, but it's not. But there is a travel team, only travel teams can play, they're not recreational teams. What we're proposing is to use Buckley Park as a recreational space for people that wanna play soccer, a soccer recreational program, like they have in towns such as Clifton, they have in Fairfield, they have in Wayne, they have in Totowa, Little Falls, and et cetera. But here in Patterson, they don't have a functional soccer recreational program. What we wanna do is provide a free soccer recreational program here in the City of Patterson. Cause it's not fair that every other city has a recreational soccer league, a recreational soccer program. But here in the City Patterson, we don't have nothing. And it's not fair for the kids that wanna learn soccer. And on top of that, we're also producing our business here that we want to bring here, now right now, we're only doing it in Clifton, because they're giving us fields in Clifton. What we wanna produce is Patterson's first soccer academy, the first ever here in Patterson. And if you wanna talk to us more, we have, uh, information, they can talk, contact us.
Council President?
What school you guys from?
Thank you.
I'm from two-five.
School twenty, no, high schools.
High school? Eastside.
Eastside?
Yes, go orange and blue, go ghosts. Council President?
Um, just, just a minute, I know we start, I know we start the public portion, and, and we address everybody at the end, but it's, it's amazing where you guys came to just as press over here, I know you're calling the attention of all the council members here. So please make sure we, you get all the, we get all the information that you came, that you have with us, Councilwoman Memes.
Yes, so I met, and first of all, I wanna commend you for the work that you're doing. We need recreational opportunities, um, in our community. As an educator, a mom and a grandmother, I totally believe in making sure that there are opportunities for all of our children in the City of Patterson. So I took your information, I gave you the direct, uh, number to reach out for tomorrow, because I know you've been trying to reach the mayor. So call that, call the number I gave you tomorrow, so they can set up a meeting with you so that we can get this done sooner than later. It's summer coming, are you, need more recreational opportunity in the city. So I commend you, thank you so much. You're orange and blue, so I gotta support you.
Thank you, your man, thank you.
Thank you.
Council President, Council President.
Councilman Jackson.
So, so you guys are running a, a business, correct?
Yes.
And...
That is correct.
The City of Clifton, they give you a field, do they charge you for this field?
Yes, right now, we're paying out of pocket for the field.
So, so, so when you say you're paying out of pocket, you have a business. So are you working individual jobs funding your business, or is your business, are you...
Working individual jobs.
So you're working individual jobs, paying a fee so you can provide free services for the kids in Patterson? That, that should be noted, that should be noted, okay. And, and you don't have access to a field in Patterson, so you have to go to Clifton and actually pay. What are they charging for the field?
Right now, the field that they're charging us in is two-hundred dollars per hour. And we, we do, and we do practice five days a week. So each day, we have to rent a field out for at least two hours, because we have over two-hundred kids, which seventy-five percent come from the City of Patterson.
And, and one-hundred percent of your kids come free, or you charge kids from other areas?
We have the free clinic, which runs from five to six, which is totally free, that's what we want. We don't wanna call it recreational yet, because Clifton already have their recreational program.
Okay.
We're calling it a free clinic, until we move it to the City of Patterson, where we can actually call it a soccer recreational program. Because that's what we wanna do for the city that we grew up in. And then from six to seven is the academy pro-, portion of the practice.
Okay, understood. So, so you and I, we'll talk further, let me just say this. So I played sports all my life, I actually got paid to play. That gentleman sitting behind you was a mentor of mine, taught me in high school how to throw football, and I was, I was by far an excellent, um, uh, student at the game. Anyway, my father's coached here, he's never, he's always paid to coach. We don't have any free recreation, we do have free recreation, let me not say that, but our recreational programming is minimal because our budget for recreation is so small. So that is part of my plan moving forward. Every kid, to your point, should never have to pay. We should be outfitting them with uniforms, we should be paying you guys. So we would be paying coaches to provide the service, paying you guys to conduct, uh, not, not only seminars, but to coach our kids. So we'll talk, Mr. Oleras has got your, your information. And I, I think you guys are coming here very humbly, which I respect, but you do not need to do that. You're working private jobs, providing a free service for the City of Patterson. You should be coming in here, raising all kinds of hell, telling this mayor, why haven't they allowed, given you a field so you could provide their services for our community?
We have, we have, we have to continue, we have to continue the public portion.
Council President, just quickly, so as we are on live, the Director of DPW, who is responsible for the fields, um, I just gave the number. He said, call him on his personal cellphone, and they'll set it up to make the arrangements, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and kids, listen, uh, you guys have our full support. You should not be paying for, to play sport, and definitely, we should be supporting you with resources for you guys to continue playing and bringing kids, you know, uh, you know, to play soccer and, and different activities.
As long as I can kick the ball.
God bless you guys, you know, great job, you know, you got our full support. Thank you, next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Abalita. Thank you, Grandma.
The next speaker is Sunet Parker. Hope I pronounced that correctly.
I'm sorry, Net?
He said that.
Is the next speaker, Madam Clerk?
Sunet Parker.
They left, they left.
Left, next speaker?
They left, okay. Next speaker is Ken Tapeta? No, Ken? Next speaker is Joel Keys Jr.
No, they left.
They left.
Yeah, they were part of the, um, I got it already.
State your name, please, and address.
Joel Keys, Patterson. Before you start, my time, disclaimer, uh, to Councilman Valles, condolences to you and your family, sorry for your loss, because a major portion of my speech is directed at Councilman Valles, so it's business, not personal. All right, I'm ready. At the last meeting, the speech I gave titled Freedom of Speech or Civil Disobedience served as a distraction by Councilman Udine that prevented me from addressing Council President Mendez and Councilman Valles for their continued practice of ego defense mechanisms at the March fourth meeting. Council President Mendez reinforced the deception of colorblind racism by restating that talking about racism is dividing people. Therefore, at the next meeting, I will reread the rebuttal speech I gave at an earlier meeting, which includes the following excerpt. Quote, "Unchallenged racism is what divides people, that's reality. On the other hand, it is a defensive distortion of reality to project that the person who talks about racism is dividing people," unquote. Councilman Valles reinforced the portion of the ego defense mechanism's definition for projecting narcissism when he assumed a puritanical sense of ethical superiority and innocence by reading the contents of a proposed censure of Councilman Jackson. Councilman Valles hypocritically claimed a puritanical sense of ethical superiority and innocence because although Councilman Jackson has said egregious things about him, Councilman Valles has said equally egregious things about Councilman Jackson. For example, at the council meeting on August sixteenth, twenty-twenty-two, Councilman Valles retaliated to an insult from Councilman Jackson and said, quote, "I'm waiting, Councilman Jackson. Yo, you probably brag about your education, but your education, you know where is it? Like your hair, no hair, your education is like nothing, no hair," unquote. You retaliated, but later that night, you threatened to press charges against Councilman Jackson for ridiculing how you speak English, once again hypocritically assuming a puritanical sense of ethical superiority and innocence in the process of demonizing Councilman Jackson. Councilman Valles, once you retaliate, all innocence is lost. By the way, Memes, Kalik, and Mendez are in the same boat as Councilman Valles. They retaliate with insults towards Councilman Jackson, then complain about his attacks against them while assuming a puritanical sense of ethical superiority and innocence in the process of demonizing Councilman Jackson. In the words of Councilman Valles and Councilman Memes, go check the videos of the past meetings and tell me if I'm lying. Thank you. Perfectly.
Next speaker, Madam Clerk?
The next speaker is Anthony Wheeler. Mr. Wheeler, please state your name and address, thank you.
My name is Anthony. I was about, I didn't even know how I wanted to come up here, you feel me? I debated about it, but sometimes you can't even debate, you just gotta come. I ain't got no paper, I ain't got no phone, but I know off the rip, don't none of y'all represent the City of Patterson with Mr. Jackson. That's it, you feel me? I gotta, this shit is a charade up here. You trying to quote the Constitution, you don't know this shit, you feel me? You don't know it, so don't try to quote it. So when it comes down to freedom of speech, it goes like this, bro. Long as I'm not threatening you, I can say whatever the fuck I wanna say, just like that. That's the constitutional freedom of speech. Freedom of speech protects you against me saying threatening things to you. But if I wanna go up here and ridicule y'all, I can say the fuck I wanna say, because I'm free. It's called, uh, sort of republic, I'm sovereign, acknowledge us who we are, right? So that's, I'm gonna get that part out the way. Coming to y'all, y'all could say, oh, you gotta go that way, you gotta go that way. No, we could come to y'all for every fucking thing we wanna come to y'all for, because that's why y'all here. Before y'all got here, y'all came to us and said, yo, come vote for me, I'm gonna do this for y'all, vote for me, I'm gonna do this for y'all. You get here and do shit, do nothing. You worry about budget, that put budget before people. Everything is about money over here, money is. Hey, we gotta go do, take the budget. He just said something about like, yo, these people that get up here, why they not here? You say it every, every week, oh, it's about the money, people gotta get paid, so we gotta make sure we get them. But he just told you like, yo, is discretion going on? You not acknowledge you that? But it's money because you a part of the money scheme. Oh, y'all a part of the money scheme. That's why you here, looking for a better part, to get into part, better part of the money shit. You feel me? But I'm saying this, if you here, work for us. Y'all got stores out here that y'all can invest in. Y'all got landlords out here y'all can invest in. Y'all don't do none of that shit. Y'all just say y'all control order. Everything that comes in Patterson, Britain, legal, it comes through y'all. Y'all gotta say if that shit right or wrong. It comes like, like, if y'all can, no, you can stop, no, no. It comes through, I know all this. This is where it comes down from, federal down to the local. Where do locals start? Right here, not up there. So when we come in here and start speaking, y'all supposed to take that and show us like how we can get it done, where they can get it done. Not trying to tell them to go that way. Y'all give them more information for they can use. I don't do none of that. So while I'm here, I'm gonna be the tip man for the council. I'mma hold y'all accountable. I'mma blast you on TV. I'mma talk crazy shit about you until you fix your shit. Serve Patterson, not your agenda. That's it.
Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Yes, next speaker is Eddie Oliveras.
Eddie Oliveras, Patterson resident. As is often the case, I I come here and I already have a preconceived notion of what it is that I'm gonna talk about. But once I hear all of this stupidity that comes out of this council, then everything goes out and I gotta address a lot of the stuff that is said. Dr. Mims, every time that we talk about the budget, you talk about that we must pay our employees. Everyone here agrees with you. I agree with you. The entire city of Patterson agrees with you. Let me tell you where it is that we do not agree with you. It's $11 million, eleven something. $6 million goes to to paying the employees. We don't really care about those $6 million. Put it to the side. We want you to talk about the $4 million that you're not talking about and you're shoving down my throat. That's what I want you to talk about. That's the problem I have with you. And so I I was very surprised when I saw my my friend Joelle here. And again, that's not what I came here to talk about. But when I see that, it tells me how broken this city is. This administration has no resources when we have to take the director from public, from public health and fill in for the BA. We have a problem. And it's with your consent. The only person there that holds the administration account is Councilman Jackson. The rest of you is yes, 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 yes. If you see that, we have a problem, Omar. Just get there, just get there. And I hope you're paying attention. A lot of the stuff that I'm gonna say tonight pertains to you. As a woman, Cotton is always talking about how she helps people. And at the last council meeting, she says something to the effect that she's not gonna stop. Ma'am, I'm not asking you to stop. I'm asking you to stop talking about it because that's not what we pay you to do. We don't pay you to do that. We pay you to run the city. The raccoons, the whatever else it is. Listen, it will do you a world of good, Omar. It will do you a world of good to go to Facebook and look at a post that was put up by Ms. Morris, Darling Morris. In a nutshell, she tells you exactly what your job is because you don't know. And you know where she got that from? From the city charter. Omar, everything you do on that council should come from that charter. Read it. If you need help with that, I will get you a copy and I will sit down with you and I will read it.
Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Next speaker is Alan D. Jefferson. Mr. Jefferson?
Hi, Mr. Vernon.
Oh, my God, I haven't seen you in a while, man.
Mr. Jefferson, kindly state your name and address. Thank you.
Good evening, member, council members. Alan Daniel D.A.N.I.E.L. Jefferson, Jr. 81 Suboi Drive, Apartment 2, Prospect Park, New Jersey, 07508. Now, I came here tonight. I wanted to jump on somebody, but I'm not gonna do that. I'm gonna be respectful tonight, okay? But one person is here. Now, last week I was at the meeting. A couple of people took out of context what I was talking about. I invited Mrs. Mims to come outside so I could talk to her. Everybody took it out of context and nobody corrected it. Now, when is somebody gonna correct it? All you are sitting here, I'm waiting. Now, I guess nobody's gonna correct it, huh? Mike, we got your back. Don't you ever think we don't. Okay, this community, we got your back. And anybody that don't like it, like I said last week, you know, let the chips fall where they may because the city is suffering. The mayor's got people sleeping right on his porch and he don't even recognize it. Now, tell me if I'm lying. Our children are suffering. I commend these young ladies. I commend those young men that came in here because they want to do something because they live here, not in Clifton, not Passaic, not Little Falls, not Total. They live in Patterson. We need something for our kids. Now, when are we gonna wake up? When? And money, we always talk about money, okay? Ms. Riley and this young lady here, I'll volunteer my time to help you. I don't need to get paid because I already got paid. Already got paid. And my son, Alan Jr., I'm not Alan III, Master Sergeant, 21 years of service. My son Andrew, 20 years as a parole officer. So the apple don't fall far from the tree. Come on, we need to wake up. Let's get busy, okay? And stop the gang banging.
Next speaker, Madam Clerk. He's spoken already. Madam Clerk, is your mic on?
It's on now.
It's on now?
Sorry. Yes.
My name is Joseph Hart, born Patterson, New Jersey, 1960, August 24. This is my city, my town. I'm an OG. Now, I could swear and all this stuff, I'm not gonna do that. Sometimes, I lost my job of 29 years when that COVID crack came out. But, you know, I'm trying to get help and stuff like that. But what I'd like to see be done, I'm not here to bash any guys or nothing. I would like to see more parking authorities issue tickets out to this legal parking crack downtown. They don't, there's no respect. The yellow lines are being crossed by cars parked up on the sidewalk. I take transit bus every day. They got turned on the other sidewalk. It's gonna be accidents happen. Sometime the sheriff or police car, especially by the pizzeria on Ellison Street, they'll they'll park there and they'll try, you know, horn, harden the horns for them to come out and they don't. Me, if I did something like that, I would've got a ticket back in the days and buy the Broadway pizza on West Broadway and smoke shops and all that. And then where's the pedestrian walking by McDonald's and all this stuff? I gotta cross that. Then you got the mini motorbikes, all that pisses, angers me, okay? And it's not right. It's not right. I hate it. I cut some people out when they park in a transit for the bus. I'm like, yo, there should be more officers out here giving them tickets. I mean, everybody got parking ticket when the meter ran out. But the legal parking, the cross zones, people in the wheelchair, regardless what the condition is, it's not right. It's not fair. But that's all I got to say right now. There'd be other things I might complain about. But God bless all y'all, y'all be safe. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
I'll try to pronounce this name. It looks as if it's Rupa Abdul.
He left.
The next speaker is Victor Obayes.
He left as well.
Left, he was part of the team.
There are no more speakers.
Motion to close.
Then I move to close. Move, motion to close.
Excuse me.
Victor?
What's your name?
I don't, I don't have that name.
Victoria. Victoria, maybe you're mistaking Victor for Victoria.
Maybe Victor for Victoria. I mean, you're the, you're the last speaker, so they start you three minutes and...
I remove my motion.
My issue...
Give us a second. Madam Clerk.
Victor.
Sir.
It's Victoria.
No.
I definitely signed and I put my address.
I just say a Victor, I don't see...
Okay, no problem. If you sign on now, not a problem. We will give you your three minutes, so...
Okay, thank you.
Madam Clerk, let's start the clock, so...
Okay.
Welcome.
So I've been complaining two years now. My neighbor running plumbing business from this driveway, illegal apartments and basement. He's got numerous parking and zoning, zoning violations. As far as the court date, I don't know if if zoning is gonna ever take him to court because it seems like this court date. Can Tiffany, can you help me out with that? Because I've been complaining for two years. Okay, the second thing, I have, the police have been very helpful and they have told me with whenever I call to complain, when he has harassed me, when he has threatened me, I have seven police report, I have seven police reports with what he has, with the threats, harassment. I have videos. So I was told to take him to court, take him to court. Guess what? I did try to take him to court. So the wife who have, I've never spoken to in my, in my life, she filed a complaint against me saying I was harassing her by calling zoning and the police. I have, I have spoken to police. There, there are numerous zoning violations and there are numerous parking violations committed every single day. I probably have like 1,000 pictures. I have been posting them on Patterson Plus. So the wife who filed this complaint with no proof, zero evidence, she gets a court date, four court dates to try to, you know, prove, provide evidence. No evidence. So I was told, I'm like, okay, they accepted my complaints. I should get a court date. I'm told I should, I, I'm told it's recommended that I go to remediation. Against someone who has threatened me for the past two years, who has harassed me, why does, why do they get a court date? Four court dates, but I, it suggested that I go to remediation. So I don't even get assigned a prosecutor to show my evidence, to present my side? Corporate counsel? I believe I spoke to you about this. So I'm hoping I get my date in court too. And I'm hoping I can get a prosecutor to show my evidence.
Counselwoman. Counselwoman. Counselwoman, let her finish her three minutes, please.
Yeah, I have not agreed to any remediation, but I do know the person who I thought they have relative, they have a relative in the city of Patterson. Maybe if I had a relative in the city of Patterson, my court, okay, I would get a court date.
Thank you. Motion to close.
Move.
Move by Councilman Mims. Second by Councilman Rahim. Roll call, Madam Clerk, to close the public portion.
Roll call to close the public portion. Counselwoman Cotton.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I know a lot was said tonight and, you know, being on the city council, I've been here since 2012. I think that what has happened is after COVID hit in 2020, we, we still are lingering with COVID. The effects of what COVID have done to this country, not just Patterson, New Jersey, but to this country, to this world. I don't know how many people have lost their lives. My husband was one of them. But it hasn't affected a lot. And and I think that when people say your role, our role has switched. Our role is not what it, what it should be. But people come to all of us for, to be guided somewhere. Where, where can I go? Where can I, where can I get help? Where can I, whether it's the county, whether it was the state level, where is, even if it's on the federal level. I was getting phone calls about they have a program to help people pay their electric and gas. And then I, then I got Senator Wimberly was able to get the same program, I'm not sure if it's called SAFE or whatever, to help people with their water bill. During COVID, nobody could be shut off for nothing. It probably lasted almost two and a half years where people probably could have paid something and they hadn't paid anything. Because even though they knew that they didn't have to pay, but the government didn't say you were exempt, that you didn't have to, they, they couldn't cut you off. So there's a lot of things and I, I just know that for those that don't know me, I've been in this city for a long time. There's a lot of people out here that done, done a lot of good things for a lot of people. I know one thing is that my kids better not come to that mic and act like a fool, I can tell you that. And you know, they better not, you know, especially talking to other people. You can't, you can't cuss people out. Why people think it's okay to cuss people out when you really don't know who they are? You don't even know them. Is it okay? I wish my child would do that. You know, let me tell you something. I got a, a message and I saw it, as you know, and I say to parents, you know how your children are. Don't think that you don't, you know what they do. You know when they acting up. You know your child. I had a parent that called me and then I had to refer her to, her child got a picture from somebody with a gun pointing at her child. Like, how you do that? Like, and then you don't see nothing wrong with it? Like something, there's a lot of stuff going on. People can say what they want, but, and I can say, I think all of us, but Councilwoman Mims especially, the calls that come through, I'm saying since COVID of 2020, if you were able to survive it now, when I look at this country and I look at the world and I look that we live in New Jersey and we haven't had tragedy like in other parts of this country, you know what it is? It's not funny. Can you imagine a storm coming through Patterson, New Jersey, and everything is down? Everything is flat. Don't have this, nothing. You know, I think about stuff like that. So I'm gonna continue to do, help who I can, whatever I can because you know what? I'm not gonna let nobody take my joy and my blessings from me. I don't give a damn how much you want to talk about me. I know what I do for people. I know how I help and we all know what we do. So don't say, when you don't know someone, but there's so much that we can guide ourselves. I tell our young people, they don't need laborers no more. They don't need sweepers. I need you to go get your CDL. I need you to go and, and, and learn how to be electrician. I need you to go learn how to be a carpenter. I need you to go to learn how to have a skill. You don't necessarily have to go to college, but just have a skill. Because they're looking for, we don't have those good jobs like we had before. We don't have Nabiscos. We don't have Ford Motor Companies. Those people made money that they bought a house. They sent their kids to college. They were able to go on vacation. We don't have those jobs around here like that unless you got a college degree now, maybe, and you got a trade, so... With that being said, Madam Clerk, like I always say to you, I'm gonna do whatever I can to help you out in that office. Deputy Clerk, Phyllis, Deidre, I see how hard your ladies work. And we gotta just push to get you the help that we need, but they gotta know, they gotta do council meetings and everything else with it, so... I appreciate you ladies. I truly appreciate you because I see everything you do and you're gonna be very busy, so... With that being said, With that being said, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Counselwoman.
The public portion. Thank you.
Councilman Jackson.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And Brother Keys, you can probably help me with this better than, because there's, from my perspective, there's two kinds of people. You have creative, people who figure things out, and you have people who memorize things. I'm not, my memory doesn't serve me that great. I won't remember your birthday, I remember the things that happened, but there's a quote that talks about how the media will villainize the, the noncriminal and make the criminal look like the victim. And it's very unfortunate because if we, at this time, we don't understand what our city is producing, see, there's a level of accountability that always has to be in positions of authority, where people step forward to take a position of authority, there's a level of accountability. First of all, I, I never met the young man. Today was my first time meeting him. I did see him on social media, he was popping off about something, and I went and corrected him about certain things. We had a bit of a debate, so to speak, but he still came to the mic and said what he said, but he, he's not a child, he's a grown man with, with an opinion, an opinion of what he is experiencing, what he is living through. If he came to the microphone and he only understands how to project himself in a certain, with a certain dialect, it doesn't mean that he doesn't know what he's talking about. And further, all you gotta do is watch, turn on YouTube. You don't even have to really look at TV. Go to YouTube and look at Congresswoman Crockett, look at Congresswoman Green, all of them are using profanity on the congressional floor. Profanity is a choice that people have utilized, that we wanna frown, we don't wanna hear what you're saying, we don't wanna listen to what you're talking about, we don't wanna hear the issue, we wanna spotlight the fact that you came here to utilize profanity and you're talking negatively about me. Listen, that's, it's, it's part of the job, it comes with the territory. If you take this job, you have to be willing to take the scrutiny that comes along with it, especially when you're failing and we, 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 I'm not excluding myself, we are failing this city. All you gotta do is drive around the city and you know we're failing the city. If you're telling me that this city is better today than it was eight years ago, then you're lying through your teeth or you're blind, one or the other. You know, Dr. Claude Anderson came here, he was at my establishment, we walked around, I forget what church, Sister Greer, you were there? Because we were over there near St. Augustine someplace. He came outside, he's not from here, he started crying. He was like, my people don't deserve to live like this. Now, many of you heard me fighting tonight. If anybody feels that the ordinance that I'm trying to write has something directly to do with me, is a benefit to me, then please, by all means, inbox me, text me, tell me, I'll leave it alone. Here I am, fighting, struggling to write an ordinance to benefit the many people that are placed in these precarious situations of living in these terrible conditions, Corporation Council should be partnering with me to make sure it happens. The rest of the council, they wanna push it forward. No, 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 if he don't sign off on it, he, it's not his responsibility. We can approve legislation that he doesn't sign off on. He does have the ability, the requirement to research, but he could tell the council, guess what? If the council says, we wanna paint all the lines in the middle of the street green and yellow, because we do it, St. Patty's Day, we do it, we wanted to paint them pink, he doesn't have to sign off on it. The council approves it, it's still gonna get done. It's the same thing. But see, people are here, they don't understand their role, they don't understand their responsibility. So what's happening is, they're able to run amok because this council is not doing its job, because we don't understand our jobs. We think, we just gotta come and we speak the language, see a nun move the clothes, Madam Clerk, can I have a motion? That's not, that's not what's required. You don't have to necessarily understand the language to be responsible in the voting and the actions that's taking, taking place by the council. So it's rather disappointing, but it's not a surprise. In fact, if, if this council functioned half as, as, as it's supposed to, it wouldn't look so bad out in the city. It wouldn't be so bad out there. We have, I have a mother, a Dominican woman who, she, she had a, one of her sons was murdered. The other one was shot. He, he didn't lose his life. Then her daughter was recently, she, she decided to homeschool them, but you know, they're seniors in, in high school and they were trying to make a few extra dollars. The girl was taking on some Instagram stuff and, you know, doing hair for people. They came to the house, robbed them at gunpoint, with masks. This is the city we live in. This is the city that we're doing such a phenomenal job in. The city that we don't have a BA, the city that the BA left out making $150,000 and did nothing for the city. The city that's paying the current BA $160,000 to work part-time, not to show up at council meetings, an interim BA who's part-time, with two assistant BAs that the former BA reassigned to these other departments in a retaliatory condition. When did you hear this council say something? The council then lined up and with me, after the BA left, talked about how horrible she was, after she's pimped the city out for the last seven and a half, eight years. But this is what we're dealing with. And then we come here and instead of scrutinizing the mayor, we wanna scrutinize the young man that comes in and says, you guys are fucking up. Oh, I'm sorry. You know what, I apologize, because I promised I would not do that, Ms. Laura. Girls, I apologize. But, but people coming to the podium and expressing themselves that way is not a violation. They have a constitutional right, a freedom of speech to express themselves the way they want to, the way they feel. And because of the conditions is that's the way they feel. And if they come here and expressing themselves that way and their concerns are not heard, then guess what? Everything they say on the, on the microphone is validated. Because this council does what it does. Right? So, in, in closing, Corporation Council, please, I will, I'm gonna need a report on the noise ordinance that Councilman Udine says was re- amended. As I look it up, it still specifically talks about decibel levels. You cannot go to someone's home and say, oh, it's too loud, if the state ordinance says there's a decibel level requirement. I don't understand, and maybe you can outline for me how exactly it's being, you know, perceived or, or interpreted, but from the way I see it, it's an unlawful act. If any officer writes a ticket for a person that violates the noise ordinance and it's not done in a specific way, all they have to do is be a person that's gonna read the law. They don't need an attorney, they can go there and dispute it and it's clear, the case is gonna be dismissed. So if Councilman Udine wants to be responsible, he can ask for the administration to provide reports on how many people have received summonses based on the current amended ordinance, which I would conclude, I would venture to say there was none, zero. So where's the effectiveness of this council? Zero. We write ordinances, we, we, you know, you understand, we do certain things and zero. Zero is done. But we celebrate and we name the streets, we doing all, anyway. I, I don't do that. I don't heckle. I mean, I, listen, when the truth cuts like a blade, like Sister Moore said today, when you throw a stick in a, in a, in a crowd of dogs, the one that yelps is the one that got hit. I'm not saying, I'm just stating the facts, the obvious. And if there's anything that I'm stating that's incorrect, I would be the first to apologize and rescind, retract my statement. But if it's not, then you just saying it's wrong don't mean it's wrong. You need proof. Corporation Council can't just say, what I wrote, it, it goes against the premises of the law. He has to produce a state statute, an ordinance, or a federal guideline that outlines why what I wrote does not meet the requirements of the law. And I believe what I presented showed in fact that what, what I wrote in fact does line up with the accordance of the law. And with that being said, Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Mims.
So very seldomly I get to do a little educating from the side, and I think tonight will allow that to take place. So first and foremost, as I always do every week, I wanna thank the public that is present and the public that is viewing, and I want you to really hear this, because when we were younger, there used to be a little commercial or show that talked about being on the steps of the White House with Bill, right? So you had the bill and he was talking about the three branches of government. So I just wanna give just an educational civics 101 lesson. We, as the city council, are the legislative body. We create legislation or laws and/or ordinances or resolutions. Then you have the executive branch, which is the administrate, administration. They enforce that which is created, on the books, amended, that is their role. And I know a lot of times we get blamed for the, the executive branch, which is outside of our purview. When you give us a call, we will make those calls to the administration and to the directors, but that is the executive branch. Then you have the judicial, and I wanna talk about a few things that happens after we create legislatively, city council, after it's enforced by the administration, then you have the judicial. The judicial interprets the laws that are written. They settle legal disputes. They punish violators of the law. They hear civil cases, they protect individual rights granted by the state constitution. They determine whether someone is guilty and or innocent. They have a setup in the courts with mediators and prosecutors and, and public defenders and all these people, and then you have the right to a public defender or you can hire your own legal counsel. That is your right. But I just wanted to put it on the books, because sometimes, I understand that civics is not fully taught, but I just thought it was, it was just upon my heart to give a quick civics 101. When your garbage is not picked up, that is executive, that is the administrative. We can make a phone call, we see the item, we could take a picture, all that, but that is the executive branch. If you see an item on the books, or we wanna create something where the fees are low and we wanna increase it, that is our job. But once all of that is done, and now it has to go to determine whether you're in violation, you get a parking ticket, you don't agree, now you go to the judicial side. Just wanted to give that little civics lesson, and I know a lot of lawyers are watching me right now, and I know you'll give me a credit for that. I, every week, I do say it. I am on the finance committee currently, thanks to Council President putting me on the finance committee as the vice chair, but I say it every week, on the payment of bill, or every time it is included, on our payment of bills list, not the budget, so I wanna clear that up. It's not the budget, it's the payment of bills. We have employees that need to be paid. There are other items. Any council member, any council member can request items five through whatever, page two through three, we want all of this to be outside of the agenda, outside of payment of bills, and then we vote on it separately. Anyone can do that at any given time. It's not for us as a total council body, because for me, I believe services rendered should be paid. If you, if, if we buy a part from your store, we are using that part, we need to pay it. So if any council member chooses to feel that payment of bills is, is corruption and whatever you feel, it's fine, I have no issue with that. Just say, when, when it comes up, say, Council President, I wanna remove these items, and we will vote on them separately. They may still pass and/or fail, but every council person, I wanted to clear that up, because I think people feel like the payment of bills, that you all should be doing it. I don't have an issue with payment of bills, so I'm never going to say, take items off. These services have been rendered. And if I do a service or you do a service, as Mr. Vernon, you give us that great barbecue and we get that invoice, you wanna get paid. It takes a long time, and I know people will, and Councilwoman Cotton can attest to this, sometime invoices take a while, right, CFO? It doesn't happen overnight. So when someone's item is on this agenda, look, I go through the bills list, I go through my agenda, I'm not gonna say I'm not voting on it, because I've done my due diligence. Councilwoman Cotton, you said it perfectly about coming, and I, look, people could come, they could say whatever. I don't have to defend my name or the work. Everyone in Patterson knows to call Councilwoman Mims to get it done. Everybody. Whether they call me or not, they'll have their sister call, niece call, but they're gonna call Councilwoman Mims, because they know, I don't have to do all the talking, right, Linda Mora? I don't have to do talking. Linda Mora calls me four o'clock in the morning, 4:30 in the morning, and most times I answer her call, right? She calls and if I don't answer it, she knows, she gave me something tonight, I already sent it over. But the thing is, you have to get to know everybody. Sitting here or watching a soundbite does not really give you a full picturistic view of what we do. You got council members on here that do a lot of work. We're here an hour before the council meetings every week, going over finance items, so they, we have a clear perspective before we come out to the public. As you sit here, we had sixty, 62 items on the agenda. Council President allowed me to push him and help him. We only have two items left. Normally, we're here till midnight. After we vote here, all we have left is the budget. That's it. We have already pushed through the agenda. We sit here and I get it, there's a lot of stuff that goes on in the city, garbage, trash, double parking, we get the calls, noise, everything, we get the calls. We live here. We don't live somewhere else and sneak over back into here to sit on the council on Tuesday night. I'm born and raised Patterson, I live here, and I tell people, I don't mind, but, look, free publicity is what I ask you for. When you post me, I get free publicity that I didn't pay for. Because when people see you posting me on social media, Instagram, they're like, that's my councilwoman, that's who gets it done. So please, keep posting me, I appreciate you. Thank you. That way people could continue to call me so that it could get done, because I'm always gonna rock with Mims. I'm, I'm gonna say that on the record. And I'm gonna put this in my closing, in my closing. A lot of this rhetoric is gonna be over when the mayor election is done. A lot of this talking is only because of the mayoral election. There's an assumption, Mims is running for mayor. So the goal is, come, we gotta, we gotta attack Mims because she running. Your attacking won't ever stop anybody from voting for me. You're helping them vote for me, because when you attack me and they call me and I get it done, you just gave me another vote. So thank you. Keep coming. I must be really important that you leave your families, you leave your friends, I love it. Thank you for making Mims your priority. I appreciate you. I really do. Dr. Lelisa Mims. Thank you for that. Madam Clerk, secretary, police officers, director, acting business administrator, Corporation Council, CFO, I'm putting this on the record, we have two officers that are here. I'm not really sure downstairs with the metal detector, how it's, if it's being utilized or underutilized, but I'm putting it on the record and I want the public to hear this. We have to be careful as we antagonize or promote people to come and say things, because if they come in this building with weapons, bullets have no names. And if a bullet goes for, it could hit anybody in this chamber. And as you remember, we are people's mothers, grandmothers, fathers, uncles, wives, husbands, you name it, we run the gamut. So we have to be careful giving out misinformation to the community, antagonizing the behavior that will cause, cause almost like a January 6 riot, right in this chamber. So I'm putting it on the record, Corporation Council, BA, and to our CFO. We have two officers, but we need to get another one, because downstairs, I am demanding that we check for weapons. We check and make sure that people coming through the metal detectors, they're not carrying a, a gun, a knife, or anything. Because now to see what I'm seeing going on, it's not about the city's business, it's about, because people are gonna be waiting for us outside this building, and that's gonna be a problem, I'm telling you right now. It's gonna be problematic. So we need to make sure that we have people checking and people coming through here, that they're being thoroughly checked. And I'm asking based on tonight, because when people come to, to this chamber, let me tell you something, people are watching, and then they text you who these people are. Be careful. Be careful, be very careful. We are sitting here, we are people's parents, grandparents, we are elected officials, we don't mind you constructively criticizing us, we don't have an issue. But we're never gonna allow you to come here and to, to almost threaten our lives, or to attack us, or to act like you're pumping fear into us. That's why our police are here, to protect and to serve. So I'm putting it on the record and I want it duly noted. I didn't say anybody did, I'm saying... I'm saying I'm putting, Councilman Jackson, I didn't say anybody threatened anybody.
Council members.
I am putting it.
Council members, please, we closing.
I'm putting it on the record. I am putting it on the record proactively, because a gentleman came to this chamber, a gentleman came to this chamber, and I know some of you council members remember this. He said they don't even check the metal detectors. He pulled out right on that podium, a knife in this chamber. And that's why I'm making this request. We don't know what people have on in their possession. We don't know who's waiting for us outside based on the misinformation that's going out into the community. It is incorrect. If you think that we do nothing sitting here, something is wrong. Don't believe that. I don't care who tells you. Come meet with us, call us, make a conversation with us, or whatever you need to do. We work. Right now, I made the second, FIDAF, they'll be getting a splash pad. You may not like it, but I know our youth would love to play in the water in the park and have swings in the park. There was graffiti on the wall. When the park was first done because of the past issues, I requested that it be graffiti paint, because I knew that they would come back. They have already come back after we spent all this money on the park. And this is not people outside, these are people in our community that are going and vandalizing and touting up the parks. So I'm saying on the record, please do this sooner than later, that we have people here to make sure that they're and not just continue safety in the building, but even as we walk out. Because I'm telling you, as things rise up and the election is coming, it's going to get intense in here, and I'm just putting it on the record. Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Omar.
Yes.
No, we're closing the public portion now.
You want me to come over here?
Yeah.
He said yes? Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Don't do that.
I wasn't referring to anyone at the podium.
No, sir, sir, if you are, I'm sorry, council.
Wait, no, I got it. I saw the floor. But I let me say this, no, I got it, Council President. I don't want you to insinuate, I wasn't talking about anybody at the podium. We had a gentleman come, Mr. Adamson. Mr. I want you to listen because you you made a request to me.
Here we go.
Councilwoman Cotton, let me just.
Councilwoman MEMs.
Council, Council President, Mr. Adamson.
No, we're not. And we're not talking back and forth.
But I just want to put it.
We allow, we're in the closing of, just a minute, we're in the closing of public portion. If I know, but if you want to have a conversation, you could do a sidebar with a council member. All I'm asking is respectfully, let us close the public portion, and let's just continue with the agenda. But if you want to talk, you could have a sidebar conversation. No problem.
And just 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 in closing, Mr. Adamson, I'm sure you agree that we need to be protected in these chambers.
All right.
Yes, so that's why I'm asking, I don't know, when you guys came up, were you checked in a metal detector?
Yes, well.
In the front.
Yeah, so I want to make sure that it's properly.
Downstairs.
Properly being checked.
They're checking everybody downstairs.
So that's what I want to do.
They're checking everybody.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Uden.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Good evening, Patterson. Those who are watching live, those who are here in the chamber, again, thank you for joining us virtually and in person. Madam Clerk, so let me address just in general some of the conversation that we we had take place here regarding these services. As a council member, I totally agree that the some of the services that in very frustration level.
Yes.
If we talk about, last year, we had we have to adjust police department. Police response rate is in very frustration level in the city of Patterson. We all have that experience, there's no question. Now, as a council body, if you know this, we tried our level best to make sure that we satisfy the department, we tried to attract the new officers to come to the city of Patterson. We give a new contract, and I believe that this is a very decent one. In seven in seven years of service, a police officer can make six-digit number, salary, it's a hundred, a hundred thousand dollars in seven years. Comparatively, not maybe better than the other municipalities, but we try to introduce the best one possible. And this contract was supported by ninety-five percent of the Patterson Police Department. This is just an example. Another example I we can give that when a DPW situation, you know that about bulk pickups, trash collections.
Yes.
We purchased new trucks.
Yes.
From the with the art money, right? We approved it emergency to make sure that we purchased new trucks, and we did that. As council body, we are trying our level best to give enough resources for the executive branch to implement and and provide services to our people. Now, when you are missing the services, yes, we it's easy to target us, because we are here, we are with you, you see us outside, you see us here in the chamber. But truly, this is not our duty. When you guys call, and just know this, how hard it is, and every day, this is a call we receive, every day, there's no day we pass without making a phone call that, hey, there was an accident, we are waiting on the street for two hours, can you call on our behalf? We receive phone calls saying that I live on this street, they did not receive the trash, or bulk is out there, or illegal dumping out there. We receive these phone calls regular basis. It's not just myself. I believe all my council colleagues receive this kind of calls. And when we receive their calls, we make phone calls on your behalf to the particular department.
Councilman.
Is everything good?
I'm sorry, you continue, council. Councilman, can you wait for Councilwoman Robby to get into the chamber? Continue, please, Councilwoman.
All right, thank you, Council President. So every time we receive phone calls, we call to the particular department, and we request exactly, like, we request them to provide their services or make the service faster. That's all we do, actually. We request them to provide the services. But we do not have, we are not their boss, just know this, we cannot really force them to do something. We request on your behalf, and many times, we get positive response from the department. But if you talk about the implementation issue, that's that's the executive branch, you can talk to them, definitely, we need to do better service. We are not, as as the resident of the city of Patterson, we are not happy at many things. And that's very true. If we talk about the checks and balances and making the mayor and administration accountable, I mean, I'm talking about myself, that I try my level best to make 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 the administration accountable. Right after the public portion closes, we are going to speak about budget issue right now. We're going to hear our our version, that what do you want? Recently, even last year, with the budget that we we have introduced here, two percent raises. I know so many of our residents reach out to us that why this two percent raise? That's two percent is the minimum raise we have to have because we received transitional aid. That's there's no option for us that we we cannot go down to two percent. Last time, when I if I'm not wrong, that administration came up with three point four percent or about four percent tax hike, we said we are not going to support that. And they came down to two percent, and then we supported. This is what we we really strong stand strongly. It does not mean that we are going to vote no to every item comes up with. There's so many great items comes to the council, and we need to support that. Talking about even today, so many items that we put on the agenda, that's people's service. So many business approval, so many services that that's Patterson is waiting for, it does not mean I can say no to everything. Paying bills, again, one more thing I should say, the paying bills, we we're trying to make it a big deal. If any items, as as one of my council colleagues mentioned that, if any item you have question, it can it can raise question particularly. It can remove that particular item from the agenda and vote for it. But when you're saying that I am do not support it, the first thing I would do, I would say, remove my salary from the list, and let's vote for no for. That would be my first step, because I cannot do double standing on this. So again, Patterson, we and 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 I think it's a cooperative action that we have to be, you know, you cannot just listen to what people are saying, but you can see the action that comes from the council. And again, just introducing the paper, when you're saying that why are you introducing this paper with no implementation? Look, introducing this new legislation is our job, and we have to do that, but implementation has to come to come from the administration, and we always reach out to them to make sure that they implement whatever ordinance resolutions are introduced here in the chamber. So with that being said, Patterson, I'm still optimistic to see Patterson is moving forward. With that being said, my vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Councilman Uden. Council President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I know that we we almost we have few item before we finish this agenda, but let me just take this time to thank all the residents of our great city of Patterson to just be here with us and participate on the public portion. I really have to just commend our community. Before, there was a there was a problem with the time, people tried to get into the mic and speak for five, ten, seven minutes. Now, everybody stick within the three minutes, so we making progress. I I'm proud, Mike, resident of the city of Patterson. We could do better, and I will never promote violence. And when you come in front of the mic and you try to just curse and use profanity, you're not helping yourself. We are the leaders that this city elect to run the city. We are the legislative body. Each of us, we are the role model that our children are looking at. This video is on YouTube, we're on the TV. Listen, we could do better. I'm encouraging every person that come in front of the mic, yes, freedom of speech, I understand that. Please, I'm encouraging every person. Now, we 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 are in order with the time, and I'm encouraging everybody to be respectful, because we could definitely do better. People watching us from all over the state of New Jersey, look how Patterson act, look how they conduct their meeting. That's not the Patterson that I want. And I know that we have a lot of problems in our community, but it's always hard to do the right thing. But when you do the right thing, you sleep in peace.
Yes.
Today, a lot of a lot of my colleagues spoke about the payment of bill, Councilman Jackson spoke about payment of bill, and we always like to talk about corruption, because it's easy to point finger. Now, after this meeting, we sit there for an hour, two hours, and and if if Raphael helped me over here, this is only this whole page is par for the motor pool, for a city vehicle. And you could go on and on. You have vouchers, you have prepare our provider, people that do business with the city of Patterson. So you're telling me that it's been responsible, no voting on this document that will help the city to pay those company that do business with the city? Patterson already has a bad name as it is.
Yes.
Because the reputation that this here that this city has is that people have to wait forever to get paid, and everybody knows that. It's a shame. I feel embarrassed by that. That's the reason why I take this very seriously. First of all, our employees, they deserve respect. But let's put that aside. Let's say that you you want to you will vote for our employees. What about all the people that provide service for the city? The people that fix this chamber, the company that is fixing the floor there. So you're telling me that they don't don't deserve to get paid because you tried to play politic and talk about corruption and every Tuesday and every meeting? Our resident, they're smarter than that. They are. And I am challenging everybody, if you have a problem with a payment of bills, call for a meeting.
That's right.
Call talk about the item that you don't want to see on the agenda. That's being a responsible legislator. Now, let's talk about a good legislator. When there's when there was a problem by dumping, who was the one that got the legislation to raise the fine up to ten thousand dollars? Alex Mendez. That's an effective legislation. Now, it's administration responsibility to enforce it. I did my part. Speed bump, it was me. And I could keep going. To support our resident, it was me that put the legislation in place to make sure that the personnel department put Patterson first. Now, Councilman, let me entertain you for a minute. The legislation that you tried to put in, so you're telling me that you want to force people that build a four-family house here with the high taxes that we paying to have twenty-four-seven security? What kind of legislation is that? What kind of legislation? So now, listen, what you have to do, I'm now, you could say that, what I encourage you to do is I talk about the issue, about our housing authority, our senior that deserve that security in the front desk, that person. Let's talk about the real problem. Don't come here talking about, oh, people that build a four-family house. Most of those new construction has a state-of-the-art camera. Our police department, when they have a problem, they go into those building to get the footage, to get the footage. Listen, it's easy to use your position to play politic, but it's hard for you to sit there and do the job and do the right thing. And I choose to sit here and do the right thing. I'm not a rubbish town, I'm not, I'm here to do what is good for the city. We could play politic during the election time, and outside city hall, I know how to do my my politic, but not here. So what you do when you play politic, you try people, encouraging people to insult you, Council colleague, for what? What are you getting out of that? So now, what I'm going to do is, I really, really want to want to encourage my resident, my my Pattersonian to just, let's think about for a minute, we're going through a very difficult time in this city. We're going to talk about the budget that is coming. We're going to talk about tax increase in the city of Patterson. People are struggling as it is right now. Our property taxes are through the roof. When I go to Tora, and the same property in Tora that paid nine thousand dollars in taxes, you got the same property in Patterson paying twelve thousand. We have a lot of work to do, and this is serious business that we have to. So I don't think that we're going to have time to play politic. I think we're going to have time, our time is just to sit here and do what is right for the city of Patterson. So more than you. So now, with that being said, let me just encourage and thanks all the residents of the East Side area. Breland Park, it looked beautiful. That playground is one of the be, is going to be one of the most beautiful playground in the third ward. Larry Dove is almost, it's like halfway, that that's going to be, it's amazing project. The literal Larry Dove is going to be is going to be rebuilt, it's going to be, it's going to be renovated as well. And the resurfacing, the third ward is going to start soon and throughout the entire city of Patterson, including Sid Street from for the first ward, that you never that you never put a word for that, and we and we did the work. So when I get more call from the first ward, that the councilman of the first ward, I get more call, brother, I work, and I love to work. I love this community, and I'm going to I'm going to tell you, I'm always saying that Patterson is going to be the best city in the state of New Jersey one day. Let's pray for our city family, and let's work together to make our city better. In in another note, I I would like to just ask for prayer for the sea for the Dominican Republic. There was a tragedy in the Dominican Republic, one of the most, the largest social club, a historical social club in the Dominican Republic, the the roof collapsed, and there's over sixty-six people dead already. One of the most famous artists is dead, Ruby Perez, he's one of the singer, he's dead, and there's a lot of people are dead, so so there was over five hundred people in the social on that social club. And last night at two PM, two AM, the roof collapsed, and let's keep the Dominican Republic in our prayer, let's keep the city of Patterson in our prayer, let's not promote violence, family. Our time, we live in a very difficult time as it is. We have a president that doesn't understand what law, what the law, and what the constitution of the the United States means. We have a president that feel that he could do whatever he wants to do, and that's the reason why I take I take a lot of legal advice. And I'm I'm not planning to block anybody, but what I relate in our on our corporation counsel, every time there's a piece of legislation, I have a legislation on the floor that I'm I'm not moving out, I'm going back to corporation counsel. Let me explain to you what this legislation was about. We all know what happened when I built in the department. For me, I feel embarrassed to serve the city of Patterson as an elected official with that department. It it's it's so hard to see company and people waiting for a year, one year, two year for a permit, for them to do the right thing. Calvary Baptist Church, since September last year, they tried to replace the roof, and they lost the file three times. They misplaced the file three times. There's a resident in the Sid Ward waiting to remove his oil tank. He's been waiting four months just for a permit to remove a oil tank. How can we work in a city like this? And then you blame people when they try to do, when they do things without permit. It's a shame, and we all know about the corruption that has been going through that department for years and years. People are suffering in the city of Patterson because of that department. Now, if you ask me, do I have faith on that department? Absolutely not. First of all, they don't have the manpower to serve the community. Patterson is the third largest city in the state of New Jersey, and you go to the building department, they don't have a date and time when to give you the permit. You you go to any other city, and they will tell you sidewalk, come in three days. Any project, you got to come back in ten days, you will have your permit. Here, three month later, five, six month, come back later, we're not, it's not ready yet. Oh, we misplaced your file, all those kind of things. I understand that the state is overseeing that department, but they don't have the manpower to serve and to fix all the problem there. I I I do have a lot of confidence in the state because they do, they fix our police department. department, but that problem is bigger than, than the city. And I hope that the state look into all the mess that we have on that department, on that department. And hold people accountable for a lot of the things that they've been doing for years. Now, the legislation that putting in place is to allow people, to allow developer, whoever wants to build a project, to hire their own engineer firm, to go through the process, to get certified, to get stamped and to move the process and get to the building department, pay the fees. We could raise so much money from that department. We could bring so much revenue from that department. And we are in need of a lot of money in the city of Patterson. We expecting to ask the state for $33 million to balance a budget this year. Let's pray that the city get those 33 millions of dollars. So what I'm saying that we have a lot of work to do, it's a lot of work on behalf of our residents because our taxpayers are suffering and you have homeowners with two-family house there, three-family, that they cannot afford one more dollars on tax increase. So what do we do? Either we play politic, either we fight, encourage each other, or we sit down and work as a team to find addition of revenue to the city and to find a way to fix the problem that we fixing in the city of Patterson. All I'm asking is that, we don't have to agree on anything, but we could respect each other, we could debate, and we could find better solution for our city. That's all I'm asking. Now, last but not least, the ball pickup to the administration. Sometime when you talk about the ball pickup, all, all they talk about is data. The data, the only data that I know is Patterson is filthy. It's filthy. You have table, chairs, couch everywhere. That scheduling is not working. You could show me, oh, 80% of the people are calling. I don't believe with that. Let me drive around the city of Patterson. So you telling me that if, if you have a little table, I have to call and make an appointment? Now, when you call, they not taking appointment, they not scheduling nothing on the phone. We have a lot of senior that, they not computer savvy, they don't know how to log in and schedule a ball pickup. Please, I'm praying. If somebody call the public work department, get the ball pickup on the schedule by, on the phone. A lot of our senior, they don't know, they not computer savvy, they don't know how to deal with that. Now, my plan to fix a problem is simple. In every city, you could do this research. You could go to any municipality, they give you one day out of the month to draw the chair that you're not using, the table. They give you one, in some city, they give you two dates out of the month. Let's put it on the schedule. Give me one day or two and people will know when to put those stuff out. And we will clean that city. We have $1 million ground on air bosses on charge of that. I'm still waiting to see the result of the cameras. $1 million to buy 77 cameras to stop people from dumping in the city of Patterson. Um, I know our, um, economic development director, she's not here, but Director Ramirez, if you could relay that information to the administration. We need those cameras in those places. People are using Patterson as a dumping ground. We have to stop those people from dumping in Patterson. We have people from all over the place. I know we catch a few people, but, but we could do a, a better job. We need those camera. We vote, we voted that item over six months ago and we still have no result. Please, we need those camera in those location. And last but not least, Patterson, please stop speeding in the city of Patterson. We have people driving around the city 60 miles per hour on a residential area. Please, please. When you go to Horton, when you go to Wayne, you don't do that. Because the traffic, the divisional traffic in the police department, they enforcing that in those town. Don't do it here. That's why you here in Patterson. When people getting into Patterson, they drive 50, 60 miles per hour. Please, let's do better. My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Council President. The votes are six in favor.
Madam Clerk, I apologize. I need to reconsider my vote?
Yes.
Thank you. So, just for a point of clarity, and I want everyone to pay attention to this. The legislation that I propose tonight for ordinance specifically targets development projects and people who are, who have millions of dollars, who are making money on the community to come in and require them to provide cameras, provide security. Should be a basic requirement. We shouldn't have to, as we increase the population in certain areas, knowing that we don't have the manpower for policing, but we don't wanna put the onus on the, on the people who are overdeveloping these areas. Now, in contrast, the legislation that Council President is talking about, he's talking about allowing developers to then go hire their own agency to come in and evaluate their application. So it removes the accountability from the city. Now you got an outside agency that's doing the oversight. So when anything goes, look at the starch difference between the two pieces of legislation. One, holding developers accountable and working, one working on behalf of the developers. Just look at that. So you, you see the starch difference, right? Now, he talks about the item that I wrote and how the housing authority, first of all, no one has held the housing authority more accountable than me. When those projects came through for the, the housing authority vote, go look at them. Look who voted in the affirmative for the $100 million at Fifth Avenue, for the $140 million right now at Christopher Hope. Look who voted in the affirmative on those projects. When you talk about the housing authority's failure and they renamed the facility after the housing authority director, go back and look at the vote, look who voted, no. And then look what my answer was. The housing authority has failed our community. My legislation continues to hold the housing authority accountable. I'm not here praising them, saying, oh, we gonna name this after you, look at the great job you're doing and then come here and be a hypocrite and then say, oh, it's, it's not the developers, it's the housing authority. No, it's every single shovel that goes in the ground, there should be a level of accountability to security, to making sure that the people that live in these, these places that they're building, they feel safe and secure. Look at the starch difference. So, and, and finally, right? I understand that everybody has a different level of comprehension, but it's not, the common sense isn't that great. You don't have to have a great deal of common sense to understand what's bad and what's good. And then people make these comments like, oh, I take calls in the first ward. This is a resident tonight. This is built inside East Side Park and someone is living there. So if you can zoom in on this, uh, Mr. Cameraman, this is in the third ward. I'm not stating, I don't come here and try to put the onus on the councilman and say, well, you know, you're not doing, cuz I know where, where it belongs, but to come here and try to insinuate and infer that the first ward is in this condition that it's in because of something that I'm doing, that's just a further attempt to mislead the public. So it's obvious. I mean, you know, I know the tender cuz it got tore up tonight by illegal dissertation that I had to give that he's incapable of understanding, but that still didn't get an answer to because there's nothing you can refute. You can't not refute the facts. And this legislation that you're talking about, that you made, that legislation was copied directly from the state. The state legislation has put, uh, has placed a minimum of 2,000 and a maximum of 10,000 on dumping. And that's why the legis, the legislation mirrored that. It couldn't go beyond that because it's a state legislation. I just read that one the other day. I'll, I'll text you the state statue so you can do some research, you can have your wife pull it up for you. But this is what's going on here. We're talking about what we're doing. And so what's more important? So you made amendment to the, to the legislation. How many tickets for $10,000 have been written? But I could tell you how many ribbon cuttings you've been on with the mayor, how many times you've been, you know, rubber stamping, kissing, kissing the ring. This is why the condition, the city's in the condition it is, it's in. And that's, that's just the point blank facts. You can't debate with me. You cannot. I would, I would, man, it would, it would be an embarrassment every single time because you have done nothing responsible for this community. Just because you voted on these other things, that $100 million where that developer at Fifth Ave walked away with 25, $30 million in developers' fees, where they charged 400-plus thousand dollars. I'm glad that, that the new president has appointed this new attorney general and she says she's coming to Patterson, cuz that's gonna be the first thing that I point out to her. The $450,000 per unit for these development projects and these, and the deplorable conditions that, that the city is allowing for our residents to be subjected to. This council, if it was responsible, we'd have took the housing authority back over. We would have stopped allowing these outside developers to come in here and take on these projects. But if you listen to everything they're saying, everything is promoting developers, outside developers, and who's getting shorted? The, the residents paying $2,000, $3,000 in rentals for properties, for, for apartments that's being done to a par. And you can't refute that. If you can, then let's go out in the field and, and show it. Exactly. But, you know, and Madam Clerk, I, I apologize for delaying. I was minding my own business. He wants to call me out on, on, on things that are not tr- true and accurate.
True.
You can never debate with me on that, man. Let's do a, a head-to-head debate and talk about the things that you understand here and you would be embarrassed. You would be, it would be an embarrassment. In fact, I would have to take it easy. You know how like, you, if you see this, uh, uh, you go to maybe a dojo or something, they got a black belt just beating up on a white belt so bad, they're like, man, why'd you beat, you didn't have to do that? I would have to be like, listen, man, we're gonna just go easy cuz I don't wanna embarrass you to that extent. You have never written any piece of legislation of substance. Everything that, that you claiming came directly out of their office. I wrote everything that I've presented. Not only have I written it, I did all the research and it's not have, had not been able to be refuted. You irresponsibly has kept it off the agenda, but that doesn't mean it didn't meet its legal credence. But, you know, listen, if you look at the city, you wanna know what, what, why it is, what it is, look, this is, this is the example. This is the example. Irresponsible leadership that don't understand its role and gonna point the finger at, anyway. Madam Clerk, I apologize. My vote is no.
Thank you, Councilman. The votes are five in favor, one against, three absent. The public portion is hereby closed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And before we continue with it to those two item, um, just a public announcement, there's two more ribbon cutting that you will see me very soon. And it, and it's at the Larry Dove Field State ODR Facility for, for a kid to play sport and also the playground on Breland Park. I want our children to see that playground. Corporation Council, Breland Park is gonna be one of the most beautiful playground. The third ward is cleaning and better than the first ward because I care about it. I work with every director. I'm gonna have a picture of Councilman Jackson at the, at the Hinchcliffe Stadium at the grand opening. He complained and, and talked about the stadium, he was there, at the grand opening on the first line. I like, that's why, that's why he do all the time. Listen, you, you cannot debate with me. Listen, stop play politic from that city and do your work. That's what you gotta do. You gotta stop play politic, do your work. Now, let's, let's go back to business. Um, Mr. CFO, I don't know, but the thing is a resolution authorizing reading of the calendar, calendar year 2025 municipal budget by title only and introduction of the calendar year 2025 municipal budget.
Um, Council President, thank you. So the highlights of the budget are, our pension is going up $2 million. Our insurance is going up $4 million and our salaries are going up $4 million. Um, for that reason, we've had, we've asked the state for $33 million. Um, we asked the state last year for $27 million. Now, because of timing, um, the state is on a fiscal year and we're on a, a calendar year.
Um, just a minute, um...
Yeah, somebody missing.
Uh, just a minute, Mr. CFO. Can we call Councilwoman Mims, uh, if you could call Councilwoman Mims? Um, she gotta get in, just no quorum.
She must have went to the ladies room.
Yeah. And I, and I do apologize, but sometime, listen, sometime it's good to talk about, like, and I, and I, and I decide to rebuttal all the nonsense that Councilman Jackson was talking about because you, at one point, you gotta stop and you have to say, listen, what is good for our city? When is the time for us to start saying, talking about important situation that happen in our city and our community? Stop attacking each other. Uh, if I'm taking a ribbon cutting is because I put on the work, I supported by the administration on that project and I deserve to be there. East Side Park is renovated from the, from top to bottom. We still have a few more project. Tennis court done. Playground that was destroyed for years is brand new. Our children are the one getting the benefit of that. Now we got both park been done. We doing the work. That's what we have to do for our city. And the only way that you're gonna do that is by working with the community, by working with the director, by working with administration. That's the only way to do it. Um, so, Councilwoman Mims?
Yeah, so let me, let me just put on the record, I know I, my name was called, but it's just unfortunate that there's only five council members. So if you have to go to the bathroom, you have to break a quorum, but we're here for hours. So I just wanna put on the record, so community sees there are five council people that are left as we go into this really important discussion in regards to the budget, but I had to go to the bathroom. I hate to have to say it cuz it sounds like a kid, but my name was called, but I had to go to the bathroom.
No, it was five when you left, Councilwoman. It was five people here.
Yeah, but my name was called, it was four.
Yeah, Jackson was here. When you left, Jackson was still here.
Right, but, but obviously he must have left because they called me.
Yeah, he got up and left, so that's why we had to...
That's what, that's why I'm making the comment cuz it was quorum that was broken. Once there's not five, but I was in the ladies room.
All right. And for me, it's important to talk about this because it easy to complain, but this is the topic that we have to address. Now we are, we're on item 13. Um, Mr. CFO, he already addressed the situation with the, the request to the state with the 33 million dollars. Um, you know, so we, we definitely hope and pray that we'll get the answer from the state. That will be on regular for now and next week, um...
Did we, um...
Let me add some.
Do we have a discussion?
We, we, he went over the discussion and the state and the request of the state and increase. You have a question, Councilwoman Mims?
No.
I'm just asking cuz I, I wasn't doing...
No, no, he just was going over.
Yeah, we started, we just started. So, Mr. CFO, he just started. You wanna finish, uh, Javier? And then right after that, we're gonna open the floor for discussion.
So again, just, um, the expenses, the highlights of the expenses. Pension went up $2 million in this budget. Um, insurance went up $4 million in this budget and our salaries went up $4 million in this budget. Um, because of that, I, I stated that, um, we asked the state for 33 million. Last year we received 27 million. Um, be- because of the timing of, um, their state, their state budget, their fiscal, um, we will not get a letter until July. So in this budget, I'm only allowed to put 27 million. So for this time, right now, this budget has an increase of 5.6% for taxes. But again, it's only because of timing. Um, once we get that letter, I fully expect to get a significant amount of that 33 million dollars. And at that point, this budget again will be closer to the 2% that we've done for the last four years.
So, um, Council President?
Uh, Councilwoman Mims?
So just a few questions. So I know, um, a few things can, uh, take place. So thank you, Mr. CFO, for that. So one, um, since it's late, the budget in July, is it possible, is it possible to wait to produce, um, to introduce the budget and just do temporary appropriations until that time? Because I'm not sure, I can only speak for myself, 5.6% is a very heavy lift to say to, right now, even in a working introduced budget, 5.6 is a very big tax hike for our residents. So is it possible, um, and I don't know if our council colleagues would agree, that we can push back the introduce, um, more so look at the temporary appropriations until the time it gets closer where we know whether we're getting 31 or 30, uh, 33 million to fill the gap. But I also wanna put on the record, which I have asked you, um, for finance, that we would prepare numbers for, um, if we only got 29 million, if we only got 31 million if we only got 29 million, if we only got 31 million, proactively so that those, that information could be presented later on if need be to the city council. So, I'm just putting on the record what I've made a request for in the background, but that would be a recommendation. I don't know if the council will go with that, but I think 5.6% is a lot and maybe we need more work on it, but I would rather us support temporary appropriations until the time that we can get that number down.
So, to answer your question, Councilwoman Mims, the state wants us to adopt on time, which would be...
Sorry, can you speak close to the mic, Javier? I'm sorry.
So, the state wants us to adopt on time, which would be by April.
Well, we're not adopting, we're introducing.
Right.
So, the state wants the city to do an introduction of the budget?
On time, correct, which would be by April.
By April. And the budget will be introduced with a 5.6% waiting on the $33 million to go down to 2%.
Correct. And again, Council President can speak to this and Councilwoman Cotton can speak to this as well. She's been in the meetings and I think Councilwoman Dean, I don't know if you were there for that part of the meeting, but the state basically wants us to introduce on time.
At least it introduces.
Go ahead. So...
I would just tell the councilwoman that you got...
I understand what the state wants, right? And we're fine with what they want, but if it does not get approved...
The mic.
Oh, I'm sorry. I understand what the state is requesting as it relates to our introduce, but if you do not get the support for the 5.6%, they would have to wait anyway. So, I'm just asking. I'm not sure what the council members will vote. I have no idea.
I'm gonna say what I need to say.
I will say to the public, I will not support 5%, a 5.6% tax increase. Even if it's introduced, I'm not supporting it. So, that's me. I'm speaking for one. I'm only one person. However, so I'm just saying, if you don't get the votes, are we able to do the temporary appropriations?
Yes, we are.
Yes. How many votes will be required for temporary appropriations?
Either five or six.
Six. Any six votes.
No, no. That's just... You know, we've done it with five, CFO. We're just appropriating April and May.
For the introduction, it's six.
Right.
For temporarily, we're fine.
It's six votes.
It's six. I thought it was six.
It's both states for temporary appropriations.
No, the budget is five, but appropriations is six. So, CFO, so I'm just making that recommendation. If you choose, so the other option is leave the budget and if it fails, the appropriation item is on the agenda as well and then that will be voted on. And preferably, we'll get six on the appropriations.
No, I mean, both item, item 13.
No, they got both of them on there.
I'm sorry. Councilwoman, I have a councilman for you, Dean. Councilwoman Evi?
No, she, I had the same question as councilman.
Yeah.
Okay. So, Councilwoman Dean, then you next, Councilwoman. Sorry.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President, CFO. So, in the meeting with the DCA, I was in presence as well and you heard my stand. It's not really you heard my stand. I'm talking about the situation that the Patterson is going through. I understand that you have applied for 33, you said, million? 33 million transitional aid and I told you that we may not have, you know, get 100% granted, but even if you receive the exactly same amount that we have received the previous year, I mean, we can go, we can predict the lowest we can get. That's fine, but point is that even if you say that if we receive this transitional aid that we requested, then we can go down to minimum percentage. For that time being, I don't think Patterson residents is ready to take the burden because of many things. We are raising very minimum percentage. Patterson should know that. Because of Patterson Board of Education last two years, it is extra, you don't know how much burden came to people's shoulder. As resident mortgage payer, I personally know that how much raise and how much burden in the families. Now, I do, I recommend exactly the same way that what Councilwoman Mims just stated in the meeting, that can we not introduce something with minimum percentage and if we do not have any other options that we can think about amendment or adding in the future, that's afterward. But, exactly same, you can go for temporary appropriation. Now, if you just come up with saying that what DC exactly did in the meeting and said the person was in presence representing, she was telling us that if you do not support this budget, you will be personally sued. You recall that, right? You remember that time. And I am just, I said it, I said it in the meeting and I'm saying to the Patterson people, if I get sued, I'll get sued, but I cannot support that. I said in the meeting, I'm saying it to the public. I am not supporting that hike and if I get sued, state will sue me. But, I cannot, I cannot keep my people, the resident, out of whom, 'cause this is out of control at this point. And Corporation Council, truly, if I, that should be the commitment from every single directions. If we need to stop hiring, stop hiring. If we need to fire, fire. Whatever needs to be done, needs to be done. But, point is that we have to give the people priority. That should be the priority at this moment. 6%, 5.6% raise, that's totally unbelievable. And I said in the meeting, I'm saying in public as well, I am not going to support such kind of tax hike and whatever will come, will come. Thank you.
If I can, if I can answer.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dean. Councilwoman Cotton?
Thank you.
I'm sorry, if I can answer real quick?
Mr. Silva, go ahead.
Yeah, so just to answer your first question, Patterson residents would not feel the burden, Councilman.
You said what?
Tax bills don't go out until adoption. So, this is just introduced. Tax bills will not go until adoption, so Patterson residents would not feel anything until you actually adopt the budget. Again, this is just introduced. So, tax bills already went out through May. So, now the next bills are due August and November. Those bills won't go out until we adopt the budget, not introduce until we adopt. We fully expect to adopt somewhere close to 2%. So, no Patterson residents is gonna feel a 5.6% increase.
I still have the floor, Council President. Thank you very much. CFO, I do understand what you're saying, that by the time we get the confirmation from the state, we don't have to send the, you know, tax amount to the residents. I understand that part. But, everything is matter. Even though we don't even know what percentage you are getting, once you approve it, it's really hard to walk backward. That's truly, I'm talking about my personal view. Think about the assessment that the letter people received, right, about the hybrid assessment. People are already frustrated with the situation. I was recalling when I voted for it, trust me, I cannot even recall that, we voted for it last year in January. Now, we are, people are receiving the letters at the moment when the prices of the houses are in the like top, with the cap level. You cannot go anymore higher. If that goes high, people are gonna be on the street. At that moment, we are going for reassessment and this is another way of, you know, grabbing money from the people. And truly, everything is interconnected. If you cannot just leave it like, "Oh, no, assessment has nothing to do with the tax hike." It does. That assessment is gonna come up very high. The house prices that was from like two years ago, what was like $200,000, that house is like $1 million. I don't see Patterson has seen anything like that previously. We can expect that the amount right now, prices right now, I think we can see what we have seen in 2008 and 2009, 10 years. Exactly, the fall can happen at that time because the prices is too high. It's unbelievably high and we are going for assessment at this point. Now, we are talking about, you know, the 5.6% tax hike. Even though people are not getting the taxes amount, I believe that as a people's representation, we cannot support certain hike. We have to find proper strategy. The point is that every time we are supporting certain things like this, administration is not thinking about how we can, you know, increase our local revenues. We're not thinking about it. We're not thinking about implementation of the ordinance that we have in our paper, that everything is a factor. When you're saying that, let's say one of the council members mentioned that how many ticket we issued for this particular ordinance. We are not issuing ticket. It's not just implementation. We are losing money at the same time, too. Everything is interconnected, CFO. With the raising taxes, that cannot take place here. Services, if we say you're doing great job, maybe. But, point is that are we happy with the services? Not really. It's still in frustration level. We still need to do better job. But, on top of this, when people are not getting 100% satisfaction on the services, we are putting more money on their shoulder. That should not take place. So, CFO, we cannot speak like that we do not know these people. We are not part of Patterson. We cannot just throw stuff that, that whatever these people, you know, whatever they can, they will do it. No, this is our people. This is our priority. Our priority is not anybody else more than the people of the city of Patterson. So, this new assessment and taxes we are thinking about, whole situation, it's really unbelievable as I believe that we are failing in this matter. If you think about here in the city council or think about Patterson Board of Education, every direction, every direction we are failing. And this is our people. We cannot let them just go like this. So, I think that it is our time. We have to stand united. If we need to say, "Let's all come together and always say that we are not going to get our salary for certain months," if we really are committed like this. So, I think that seriousness has to come from the administration. Stop hiring new people. Freeze that for now. Let's make life easier for the people of the city of Patterson.
If I may, I gotta go get up, but CFO...
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Dean. Councilwoman Cotton?
Okay, thank you. I know that you said, is it in a statute that we have to adopt it by April? What? I mean, adopt, introduce, by what April?
It's by March 31st.
So, okay, so it was past March 31st?
Correct, but this is the first meeting after March 31st, so.
Okay. Okay, the first meeting. But, now, what happens if it don't get adopted? Now, if don't, what happens if it doesn't get introduced? April, May, June, July, what happens?
Well, we would have to do temporary budgets.
Each year, each quarter?
Yeah, each month.
All right. So, there's no penalty for not introducing?
Well, you're just, the state would like us to introduce, but...
I'm asking you, there's no penalty?
I'm not sure if there's a penalty.
No, no. You know, it's like other budgets, like the border edge had to be introduced by a certain time. And I'm asking him, do we have to have an introduction, not an adoption, but an introduction of a budget by a certain time?
There hasn't been penalties in the past. There hasn't been penalties in the past.
There have not been. So, then, I mean, so why even bring it up? Why we need to? I know you gotta, I know you gotta bring it up, but then, now, I think the next time that you have the meeting, Madam, Madam, BA, President, BA, I think you need to bring the tax assessor in here and explain that letter that went out. You need to bring him here so you can explain that letter that went out because I'm not sure if it's every 10 years that they have to revow your property because it wasn't done before and other cities sued Patterson for not doing theirs. We had gotten in trouble for not doing any of our assessments. So, the next meeting, you need to bring that tax assessor up here, explain that letter that people are getting on what they need to expect or what they need to do because I believe, I think mine was like maybe 10 years ago, that they reassessed my property, but it only went up like $25,000. It wasn't a lot, but I'm just saying, you need to let him explain 'cause you really not the tax assessor office.
Uh, no, but I can give you general...
Why, it said, why did it let it go out then?
So, we're doing a revow.
Why?
We were mandated by the county.
We're mandated?
The last revow we did...
Put that out there. We not revowing 'cause we wanna.
No.
We revowing because they're telling us we have to revow.
The last revow we did was in 2015.
2015, okay.
Then, we were in a reassessment program.
Okay.
The reassessment program was voted down at one point and then, I believe in 2020 or 2019, I believe in 2020 or maybe 2021, ever since then, our equalized ratio has gone down. It was at 100% and 2021, it went down and again, these are just off the top of my head, numbers to 86, then to 74. It's now down to like 48. So, we were mandated by the county to do a revow.
He was mandated?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Council President?
I know, Councilman, I'm going with Councilwoman Dean next, but Mr. CFO, I mean, you hear, you know, the concern of this governing body and the reality is that it's gonna be very difficult for the administration to get the approval of 5.6, even though we understand what you're saying, that we gotta wait for the transition A and see how much money we're getting. But, my concern comes with, when we start approving temporary appropriation, right after temporary appropriation, we spending money that we don't have and we wait until the last inning. And at the last inning, we don't see, we don't have any other choice but hit our taxpayer with increase. We could be 2%. It'll be a blessing if it's a 2% because based on what I see, might be more than 2% this time around. I think that we got work to do and my request to you is that let's start working on a budget projection. I want to see in term of revenue, how much revenue are we getting from public work? Number one, I've been mentioning that you see street cleaning going out with our inspector. A street clean with our inspector, it's easy. We losing close to $5,000 per round. If you get an inspector, if we go in with our inspector, sending a street cleaner with our inspector, it's $55. I'm sorry, Council.
Oh, no, Cora.
I'm sorry, members of the public. It's hard to do the meeting with five council members. So, just a minute. Can you call the councilwoman back? So, we only have one more item before we finish. I'm sorry, can you tell the councilwoman to come in?
Not Mims.
Councilwoman Cotton? Please. Just to... We apologize to the public, Rafael. So, we're just gonna wait, just stay down. So, once Councilwoman come back, there's only five council members and I understand that's on time. We have to go to the bathroom. We have to do things, you know, unfortunately. And we don't have any other. Council Cali? That's right. Mims is here. Councilman Abraham is here. Councilman Lawrence Fario Dean is here. Councilwoman Ruby Catherine is here and Councilman Jackson left. Well, I have to say, he knows that. Why he's not here about to talk about the budget? You know what? It's easy to complain. I mean, this is the real, this is the real conversation that we need to have. So, we have homeowners there that they expecting for us to fight and look for solution to fix this problem. But, on that conversation, no, he's not here. It's easy to complain, but it's hard to do the right thing. And that's the reason I'm not gonna stop. A lot of some council members, they use this day to play politics. We talking about here a temporary, an introduced budget with 5.6% increase in taxes. You know, people, if that happened, people, I mean, a lot of people would lose their property in the city of Patterson. So, this is the dialogue that we need to have. So, Silva, I know, stay tuned with us. We only have one more item. Councilwoman Mims is walking in. Just, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Cotton, my Councilwoman Mims is right next to me.
Uh, Council President?
Okay, she's back in. So, to my point, Mr. Silva. So, my... No, no, we understand, Councilwoman. Don't worry about it. So, going back, going back to business, Mr. Silva. Listen, it's gonna, we're gonna leave item 13 on the agenda, but as I mentioned to you before, all our community sees that we voting on a 5-point, an introduced budget with 5.6% increase. There's work to do because our homeowner, they cannot afford another tax increase. We got work to do. Let's start putting together a budget projection on DPW. How much funding are we getting from public work? How much funding are we getting for a fire department with inspection, building department with inspection? We leaving millions of dollars at the table. If we start working with those department, enforcing the law that we have in the book, I was talking about the street cleaning. A lot of the time, you see a street cleaning with our inspector. Every ticket is $55, 100 car and every round, that's easy to do it. You got $5,000 in ticket right there. We have to come back and we have to start working in term of revenue, Silva. Now, I want to see how much money are we getting from those department and what can we do? I understand we have a piece of legislation to increase the fees on the Health and Human Service, but let's see what are we doing with all those department? Because everything is not about going back and let's see how much money we're getting from the state and let's see how much money we increase in taxes. So, the best work that we could do now is look all the different sorts of revenue that we could have and we could increase in all the department across the board. Public work, fire department, police department, building department, and we already have Health and Human Service here, want to increase some of those fees. So, let's do that because that's the only way that we're gonna be able to save our homeowners in the city of Patterson. That's the only way. And I mentioned before, Torawa, Horton, you have property in Torawa paying $3,000 less in taxes than Patterson. Same property, a lot 40 by 100, 50 by 100, same piece of property. And we getting $3,000 and $4,000 more in taxes in Patterson. And it's hard for us because when you see the condition of the street, the city is filthy, we're not getting the recycling on time, we're not picking up the recycling time, we're not picking up the garbage on time. All that combined is heavy for our Pattersonian. So, our job now, let's look how much money we getting from each department. And the reason why I'm so disappointed with the building department is because I know that we could collect millions of dollars from that department just by doing the right thing, by working with people, making sure that they get the permit on time, make sure that they pay their fees and let's keep the city moving. Every dollar matters here and if we have to stop, so, you know, getting those people in those position, let's keep those position empty, whatever is empty, let's leave it like that and let's talk about those revenue projection. And let's, let's talk about those revenue projection, we're gonna leave those two items for, for the regular meeting, and let's see how we do it. So I have, I have Councilman Dean, and I have Councilwoman Cotton.
All right, thank you, Council President, you have said a lot. And again, Mr. CFO, I have to restate whatever I said, I want public to know. We need to go every single item by item in the budget this time. I think we cannot just, we cannot just depend on the homeowners. Because this is a very easy target for all of us. So just go with regular homeowners, those are living, two, three family houses, and they are the sufferer. It's like, it's like it's a crime to become a homeowner in the city of Patterson now. Because everyone's target is a homeowner. We cannot just depend on like this, that's not strategy. As administrators, it should come something different strategy. That how can we not raise burden on the homeowner's shoulder? Can we, can we bring real business to the city? Whatever business we have, can we give them the space? Think about the last many years that Patterson is speaking about, downtown area. We lost so many businesses, you all know that. Why? Just if you recall the last Valentine's Day, last Mother's Day, Father's Day, there's so many, you know, vendors outside of the, on the street, selling the product that the traditional market is selling inside. People are paying high rent taxes. They are not selling their product because the people selling on the street. Is there an implementation? Nothing. They cannot make stations right downtown, just a block from here, from the City Hall. There is no, no implementation of the ordinances. There is no punishment, there is no fine for the people who are, who are taking away the business of the traditional market. Nothing. If you think about what Council President mentioned about the issuing ticket when people are parking during the cleaning time, there is nothing. Because our excuses, they wouldn't have enough employees. But trust me, if we have employees for those particular areas, we could pay the salary of those employees and make money instead. We're not thinking about those, those strategies. The homeowners, the weakest point, easy point to target on. So I think from now, we cannot just keep on supporting the budget like this, but just randomly. I think it's time for us to go over every single item by item. And you should listen to the council members' suggestion where you can make money from, where you can make cut from, and which position should be eliminated, and where we should give priority to hire more people, so that people, the city can make more money. This is the time now. Because as a homeowner, we all are homeowners, I believe, right here. Think about, think about the burden that we are taking at this point. We cannot even afford the mortgage. Our mortgages, our taxes are way higher than the mortgage that we are paying now. Now, we are talking about the other municipalities, why their taxes are too low, because they do have real business in the city. And people, if we talk about the services, their services are way better than our services, no question. It's not that we are, we are an entire administration, this is not the case, this is the reality. So CFO, I think, I think we have to keep the people in our head before we write down anything we want. So if you, if you want temporary appropriation, do so. Let's move forward and see if we can, what can we do for transitional aid. But real solution is not the transitional aid, trust me. Real solution is real business. Real solution is how can we bring more money in the city and not depend on just the taxes on the properties? So CFO, I want people, I want to keep the people in your head and do whatever you need to do. But again, I am, I stated with the DCA, when DCA said that they will, you know, council members will be sued personal level, that was very disrespect from the DCA. Then I said it right there in the meeting as well, that if I get sued, I'll get sued. But I'm not going to support certain, certain kind of hike in Texas. Because people already about to get, you know, getting homeless. So please, we need to work on this together. It's not administration versus council members. We have to think that what can we do to elevate, make the life easier of the people? Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman Dean. Finally, so Councilwoman Cotton, and right up to this, council members.
Mims.
No, I just, you know, I, my, I know.
And we have, there's only one item.
How many do we got? No, no, which one, are we taking off one of them, or we keeping both of them on?
No, he said he wants to keep it on.
No, we will keep, we will keep it on, on the agenda, that's for both item 13 and also the emergency temporary appropriations as well. So we're gonna keep it on the agenda.
Okay. I just want to say, I was there, I was also in the meeting, and I say to, and we know there's a lot of money that's being left on the table, but actually, you talking to the wrong person. You need to be talking to the mayor downstairs, because he can tell the department heads, look, we're leaving money, we need to have the inspectors go out. I mean, there's not one day that don't go by that I have to call somebody to go out to somewhere. So I suggest to you, Councilman Yudin, Councilman Mendez, go downstairs and let the mayor know all the money that's being left on the table. No, I'm saying Yudin and Mendez, oh, I said Velez. You know, you, I hear what you're saying, there's money that's being left on the table for fines or tickets that not being written. It's just so much of it that's not being done, so. Yeah, but I'm just saying, no, no, you know, no, no, I'm trying to look at, I'm looking at Javier. Javier cannot call those department heads and tell them that they're losing money on the table. That they're losing money, not giving out tickets, not, it's a lot that's out there that could be done. And I'm just saying to you, council members, what you need to do, that's all.
Council President?
Go ahead, you know, like everybody act like they is, like, I don't understand it, I just.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cotton, Councilwoman Mims.
I, I think those, that's a great, that's a.
I'm, I'm sorry.
That, that's a great.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman, you finished? With DCA? With DCA? Well, I, okay, did she say that we must, okay, what DCA say that, oh.
I have the.
Just, just to the sound today, she said, okay, $500,000 is not gonna fix the problem, and I said, oh, it's not gonna fix it? My answer was, at this time, every dollar help. $100 is not $100 without a dollar. We cannot leave a dollar on the table. It's easy for us to go back and hit the taxpayer with a tax increase. She doesn't live here, she doesn't live here, so we got work to do. There's a lot of way that we could collect revenue to put the money in the budget.
You're not saying it correctly, you're not saying it. Go ahead, Councilwoman Mims, go ahead.
So, to the public, our taxpayer, tax base or tax entity base is approximately 20,000. So that means 20,000 people in this great city of Patterson of approximately 200,000 hold up the fort for the entire city. So every time we increase taxes, that 20,000 base are the ones that cover it for the 180,000 people. So every time we increase, and what always bothers me, we say it's only gonna be $50 or $40. Some people, if you increase it by $5, they cannot stay here. They will not be able to live here. So we have to say to ourselves, if we're going to do these increases, we need to make sure the city is clean. We gotta make sure that the garbage is picked up. We gotta make sure we stop the illegal dumping. We gotta make sure all the double parking is stopped. All these issues that we have going on in the community, because people don't mind paying if they're getting a quality service. If they're getting service rendered that their taxes should be paying for. So for me, and I know you're leaving it on the agenda, and we'll be voting next week, and I'm glad that the appropriations will be on there as well. To the public, it's not politics for me. 5.6%, Mims will definitely not support that. And I, if we're concerned about the residents of this city, we have to hear their cry. I heard the residents when the, on the school board when they were saying 6%. They were devastated by that, so I'm sure it's no difference here. We have only 20,000, about 21, 22,000, it used to be 23, 851, that has reduced. About 20,000 people that pay for the entire city of Patterson. And I know the newspaper is watching. You could put it duly on record, we're voting next week. Mims will be a N.O., a no. I will not give 5.6 tax, even in the introduce to the community, because I find what you introduce sometimes can stay. So I, I will not support that. Council President, I know you're leaving it, we don't really have to do appropriation, this is it.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
But I wanted to put that on, on the record, and to the community at large. Show up next week, because we're voting on this next week. So the meeting is at 7 o'clock next week. Taxpayers, come on out, so you can see what happens, 5.6%. Come on out next week to the meeting. Thank you.
All right, council members, I want to, I want to thank you for just being here at this workshop section. That's the last, those are, those are the two last items on the agenda. May I have a motion to close? Move to close by Councilwoman Mims?
I'm sorry, Council President, we did not finish, I don't think.
Which item you don't have, Madam Clerk?
52 and 53.
I'll tell you, I'll tell you.
Are we leaving number 5 on? Number 5?
52 is a regular.
52 is regular?
Wait, wait, wait.
Okay, and what about 53?
Huh?
53? 53 is removed. 54 is removed. 53?
No, it's not signed out by, by, by.
But the council, so the item is not there.
I'm sorry.
So, let me, let me put this on record. On item 53, we have the discussion with Cooperation Council. This item is related with Councilman Jackson's item. Cooperation Council assigned, Mr. David, Mr. David is a lawyer from the legal department that we work.
I'm sorry.
With Councilman Jackson on this item. Let them meet, and let's, once they meet, and it'll be approved by legal, we will have the discussion here, and we'll be ready to voting on it. So item 53 is out. And item 54 is out also as well by, yeah, is out until, until this meeting. Everything else is completed, Madam Clerk.
What about 59?
No, no, but just say it again, can you make it clear?
59 was consent.
Consent, yes.
That's Councilman Dean, item 50 and 59 consent.
58 consent, yeah.
Move to close.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman, just a minute. Councilwoman Cotton.
Thank you. Number 5, is number 5 still second reading?
Yes.
Yes.
Number, number 6 is still second reading?
Yes, Councilwoman Mims.
First and second, they're all good.
Cotton?
And what about the first reading?
All, yeah.
Yes, moving forward.
Huh?
Moving forward.
Yes, first reading, okay, and second reading, absolutely.
And 9 is, because irregular?
9 is on consent.
9 is consent.
Consent, Councilwoman. You good? So with a motion to close by Councilwoman Mims, and second by Councilman Alaric Forrester Dean, roll call, Madam Clerk, to close our workshop session of today.
Roll call to close the workshop session of April 8th, 2025. Councilwoman Cotton?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. What time is it? Before 11 o'clock?
Yes.
10:36.
I want to say thank you to all that was watching us tonight, and to all the people who came out in the audience to see our council meeting. There's a lot of stuff that was discussed, and I think, I, 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 there's a lot of things that was discussed. And so we just have to take a look at everything that we do and make sure that. I did have the opportunity to meet the, our new interim BA. I always say to council members, if you want to go see somebody, just go to their office, and they'll gladly see you. All department heads, they'll be glad to see you, you know. Anything you need to talk to them about, they will talk with you, I gotta say that. When I talk to my Corporation Council, I can go to Amen and Bushi, I need to talk to my Health and Human Services, I just talked to Joel Ramirez. If I need to go see my CFO, I can always talk to Javier. And I appreciate that, because whenever I come in, you guys open the doors for me to come in. And it's about working with each other, it's about relationship, it's about working and getting stuff done. With my Madam Clerk, Phyllis and Dietrich, I just appreciate you so much, both of you. For, I see all the hard work you do, and I see everything. I think that maybe sometimes some people just wasn't listening. I see what you do. Ain't no about, this ain't, this ain't the reason why we can't keep nobody. I don't know, you lying to me, then, it's a reason for something, why we can't keep nobody, but I appreciate you ladies. Because I see how hard you ladies working now. Just continue, I'm gonna keep you all in my prayer for you. But to my Councilwoman Cali, Councilman Yudin, Councilman Omar, Councilwoman Alaric, Dr. Lisa Mims. You know, she's preaching on Good Friday, my Councilwoman, yeah, two times. Well, she's in my ward at Second Baptist. Right, in my ward at Second Baptist for Good Friday, yes, so. Oh, Unity. Oh, okay, so see, we gotta make sure, Council President, and to you, you know, Silk City one. I gotta say that, you know, we're gonna hook up one of these days, I know it's gonna happen. When it is, but it is gonna happen, it might be sooner than you think. Silk City, I see you, 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 you're very, you're very dedicated. You're very dedicated what you do, and to Omar, nice to see you.
He applied.
Everyone out there, please, God bless you all, have a good evening. And Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Mims?
So, a few things. One, I have two presentations which I've sent to you, Council President, for next week before the meeting. That will be done before the meeting, they should be on the agenda for next week. Also, I want to congratulate Pastor Frederick Lagarde, number 5487. As of April 30, he is officially a licensed funeral director. Thank you so much, Pastor Lagarde. We go way back, when my daughter was two years old, she went to your school. And so I always attribute, you know, some of her educational intelligentsia to your academy. So thank you so much for all that you do in our community, Pastor Frederick Lagarde. Can't wait to celebrate you next month. Also, there's many different things, and I'll talk about them next week, because next week will be our final council meeting. But I want to say, let's continue to keep in prayer our community with all of the senseless violence that's going on. Just to alert the community, make sure you're locking your car doors, not leaving anything that's expensive out in your seats, because there are some situations where they're breaking windows out of vehicles and selling some of the items as well out of cars. So please, make sure, next week will be spring break for our Patterson Public Schools. So make sure for all of our parents, make sure you're fully aware to, that you will have some activities available for your, for your children while they're out on spring break. And I wish they really enjoy themselves, I'm gonna miss them, I'm gonna say that, I'm gonna miss our students next week. I'll probably call a few of them just to check on them. And then also, thank you for those that prayed for my mom. She is doing much better, so I want to thank all of you for your prayers. And for my family as well, continue to pray for each other, love and everybody. Mejio, I'm gonna just say this to you, Daniel, protect and serve. You know what I'm talking about, saying it to you in advance. So to all of those that come out, don't come out that watch us, please, send text messages, call us, email us. And I want to put this on record, whoever did the work, and City Hall did a phenomenal job in the chambers and in our offices, it is absolutely beautiful. Thank you so much to everybody, to all of you, I said it earlier, but I appreciate all of you and what you do. And I'm grateful to be a part of one of the greatest cities that I've ever lived in in my life, and I don't want to live anywhere else but the great city of Patterson, New Jersey. I might get a house in Hawthorne, since it's a little bit lower. I might invest over there too. Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Councilman Omar.
Before I do vote, I just want to send my condolences to the Dominican community. Council President, I know you have a candle vigil tomorrow. I hope to be there. And I want to put this on the record, I won't support a 5.6% tax increase. And to the administration, if we can have somebody come in and explain the hybrid reassessment program, it would be helpful, because a lot of our residents are asking these questions. Good night, Patterson.
Thank you, Councilman Yudin.
My vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilman Yudin, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So as Councilman Omar mentioned about the hybrid reassessment, I think, can Madam Clerk, on our behalf, reach out to the tax assessors to send some representation here in the next meeting, so that someone can speak on the behalf and make it clear? So please, can you email?
and make it clear, so please, can you email on the behalf? The second thing is that I, I want to mention and last election, I'm talking about last county election, last national election, we have seen a kind of different wave in our community. And I'm talking about in general that a group of individuals came up with saying that, oh, this is, we have to make Green Party win and this party win, that party win. Whatever happened because of that particular, you know, things that happened last time, so many of our new registered voters registered as Green Party without knowing or, or by brainwash or whatever the reason, and now we realize that the outcome that happened nationally in the last election. When we are knocking the door, so many people are, want to vote for the Democrats and they see that this is important time. Now, there's, people should know at the same time that if you are registered as, not as unaffiliated or Democrat, you cannot vote in the primary. So you have to change your registration to unaffiliated or Democrat. So I want to mention that this upcoming election is a very important election for this county, for this, this, this nation. Because the crisis that we are going through, you know that, especially in the city of Patterson, this is a city welcoming for the immigrants, but people are scared of the new things that, that came to our, came to, you know, to the people. So I would say that, please, everyone participate in the next election on the June tenth, I'd love to see you all are voting in the Democratic ticket, but at the same time, please check your registration, if you've registered, as different way, whether, not, not affiliated is fine, but I like to see you were, you were Democrat and you're voting and participating in the primary on the June tenth. So with that being said, I think we all, all need to work together in the city level, county level to move our city forward and, 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 and pray for the city from, on behalf of my council colleague, Dr. Lissa MEMS. But again, about the tax hike, Patterson just noticed, this council body last year did amazing job on the tax hike. If you say two percent, why take two percent? Just know the two percent is not a raise because this is the minimum we have to because we receive transitional aid. But if we go more than any, any points more than two percent, that's us. So we are not going to support, and I believe that this is gonna happen again, that we are not supporting anything that hurts our people. So we have to be united, fight together, you can come to the next council meeting to see how we stand and this is one of our responsibility to make sure that this is not, this is not going to hurt in your daily lives because of the raises. With that being said, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman Newton, Council President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, so once again, Council colleague, thank you, we finished our agenda today. We have a very, a healthy discussion about the budget. I, I believe that our CFO and the administration, they understand our concern in term of another tax increase in our community that will be devastating for all our homeowners. Now it's time to work and now it's time to find a way to look for additional revenue, how can we bring revenue to help our homeowner, to help our taxpayer in the city of Patterson? We have to look into public work, our fire department, our police department, our building department, how can we increase those revenue, doing the work and enforcing the law that we have in the book already to help our taxpayer, to help our Patersonian, to allow them and to make sure that they stay home on their property because now it's difficult as it is, we want, we have one of the highest taxes in the county and I would say in the state of New Jersey. So it's just a lot of work to do and we're here to work. This, this is the, the discussion that we need to have. Patterson, let me encourage all the residents of the city of Patterson, if you're driving around our city, please slow down, stop speeding, think about our children, think about our senior, we have people driving sixty miles per hour on residency area, please, let's protect our community, slow down. I know you guys don't do that in Horton, Prosser Park, don't do it in Patterson, please. Don't throw garbage out in the street. If you have a problem, culpably work, you know, let's hold everybody accountable, we gotta clean this city. I want to reiterate one more time on the bulk situation, I do believe that this is, this is a great idea to set a schedule, a fixed schedule for everybody to have the bulk outside for the city to collect, it will be easy, it will be more effective. Dumping has been a problem, we allocate one million dollars for those camera, a boss is in charge of that, we need a report of those camera to catch those people that are dumping. We have a legislation in place that will hit those people with ten thousand dollars. Now we're spending thousands of dollars from public work, cleaning all those corner where those people are dumping garbage in our community. Let's work. Last but not least, let's pray for our city and let's get united and work. I know Patterson, it could be, and will be the best, the best city in the state of New Jersey, God willing.
Before you vote, Council President?
All right, so, uh, before, I'm sorry, just before I finish, let's, let's keep the Dominican Republic in our prayer. Tomorrow we have, we're gonna have an event, a vigil candle, the Plaza Juan Pablo Duarte, we're gonna pray for those victims, it's over sixty people already dead and there's more. It, it was, it was a terrible tragedy, we lost so many great people that were visiting the, the, the country. Some friend, I received the news already from two friends that live here in the US, they, they died on that devastated accident, so let's keep all the families in our prayer and let's keep the city in our prayer. At five PM, we're gonna be right there across the street from the postal service, Plaza Juan Pablo Duarte, five PM, let's pray.
And I just, yes, I just want to give my condolences to all those that have lost their loved one in the Dominican Republic and those that they're still looking to find. We're praying for you and your families, let's continue to build together and pray for each and every one of us. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, and last but not least, our police department, thank you, Patterson, when you see our police officer, greet them, say hello, you know, just get to know your local police officer, that they, they, they are there doing the best, the best they can protecting and serving our community. Madam Clerk, thank you for being here with us, Corporation Council, my big brother, thank you, Director Ramirez, thank you, we went easy on you today. So Silva, we got work to do, my vote is yes, Madam Clerk, have a good night, Patterson.
Thank you, Council President. Roll call to close the workshop session of April eighth, two thousand twenty-five. Oh, we did the roll call, I'm so sorry. Good night, Patterson, and God bless you.
See, we made it.